This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to our budget meeting. So excited for you to be here. Jason, take it away.
And yeah, thank you all for coming. Happy Valentine's Day. Love you guys. I thought, let's start high because I'm trying really low.
We're gonna end high doing this, guys. It only goes up.
Oh, right, there you go. Now, like you were saying in the strategic plan session that, Jason, you need to tell us your opinion. And I'm thinking, hmm, and I'm over it. This is a true story. I went Buddha Belly for lunch, like on Wednesday. I get my fortune cookie. I'm walking back to City Hall. And you know what it says? It says, be careful of your friendships, like, hold your opinions to yourselves. I'm like, oh no. I shouldn't, you know, I'm gonna ruin my friendships now. But anyway, scheduled, so we had the work session the other week and thank you for that. We'll swing back to you in a few months after the staff has had a chance to do some work and there are more more priorities there that we'll get a chance to talk about. We are, a week from today, we will turn over the budget packets to department heads and they'll have a few weeks to turn those requests back to us. So this is still very high level until we get some of those requests and get a chance to talk to department heads. Then we've got our work sessions planned for April. And we have scattered some work items in the regular council meeting agendas as needed. We'll talk about those as well. And of course, final budget for, tentative budget, May 50th. And then if we do our public hearing and if there's truth to taxation, of course, that's in August. Otherwise, the final budget would be June 19th. And then today, the first couple items, Air Dean's gonna walk us through the financial review year-to-date, where we are on things, looking at revenue trends and things like that. Then I'll kind of take over the budget intro for FY26. Plan for today. Dean?
Wow, already, okay.
We're having a good time.
Nothing is more exciting than reviewing financial statements.
Sure.
And it's even more so at 8:00 in the morning. So we thought it might be helpful if we take some time and go back and really understand financially where this city is, what our, what our financial position is. And then talk about financial operations. So the best, we think the best thing to do to look back is to look at our audit report of June 30th, '24. And, you know, we talked about the idea that we need to base our information on factual data and what we have. So we think this is probably the most factual data that we have to kind of explain where we are financially. So I'm gonna have you pull out your name is Kapha, not Kaffer, because Kapha was an obligatory term in South Africa. So it's called an annual comprehensive financial report and not a comprehensive financial report. So anyway, so let's go and first of all, talk about financial position. I want you to turn to page 33. As you recall, there are governmental funds and there are mineralized funds. So for a minute, we want to talk about governmental funds. So if you look at this statement, this is a balance sheet. And you look across the top row, you can see the governmental funds, the general fund, capital projects, redevelopment, building authority, ramp, road. And then there's some other non-major funds that are listed on page, on page 95. But I think the key indicators are to look at fund balances. So if you go down about halfway, you'll see fund balances. And as you remember, funds are segregated to be based on, on the purpose of the fund and also the revenue sources that come into that fund. So when you look at fund balance, you look at different types of classification. You know, what is the fund balance made of? There, you look halfway down, you see fund balances, you see non-spendable money. That's money that you have to hang on to and you can't spend. And those are, those are endowment monies. We have cemetery perpetual care and library endowment. If you look at that, look all the way across, you can see the non-spendable amount for those funds. And then you look at restricted money. Is money that comes into the city and is restricted for a specific purpose. You can see there, you've got park impact fees, police impact fees, fire impact fees, and different things, road fees, different things. And then you've got what's called assigned, which are funds that have been designated for a specific purpose by, maybe the best example there is redevelopment. You've got money that's coming into your own agency that we've assigned to be used for economic development purposes. And then at the bottom, you see unassigned. And that is money, that's probably the biggest piece to take a look at. That's money that's available to you to use in the future budget years. All the money is, of course, but with some restrictions. So when you look at the financial position for casual city, for governmental funds, you can look across there and see your total fund balance is healthy. You've got a very good financial position. Dean, remind me what, at the end of the year, beginning of the year, you want to see that unassigned, you know, the jump, you know, what's the number you want to keep it at for the objective? I think that's a varying opinion. I would say What's the range? The range by law is you can't drop below 5% and you can't go above 35%. And that's a percentage of your revenues during the budget year. So right now, we're sitting at 35% of fund balance. 70, 700? Yeah. So that's a strong, healthy number. 7.7 million. Yeah. Same thing.
And that's not the assignment, that's the total. Because 7.5 can't be more than 35. Including all of these categories, so we can't touch.
This doesn't include the categories, right? It's just
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's just
Well, I mean, the fund balance categories.
The 7.7 is the 5 to 35.
Oh, this side we're talking about, the 35, okay, how does that look?
So had it been, say, instead of 35, say it would have been 39, then they would have put you down for a findings and you would have
There would have been a finding.
This is the total, I don't see.
Yes. And then the way you keep that below the statutory requirement is you can, you can transfer that money to be assigned for another purpose.
Capital project.
Capital project, that's what we've done in the past. FY, capital project has some assigned money. Because we transfer money from general fund to the capital project.
So Dean, are all of the, are all of the impact fees generated by the same thing? I've always thought of impact fees as like one hot, so are they generated by the same thing and they just, like, percentage-wise, go to separate?
There's a different impact fee for each activity there, such as, for example, if someone comes in to build a home, there's a charge for a park impact fee, there's a charge for a fire impact fee. And a category of different impact fees.
Okay, but they're all generated in the same place? It's not like, oh, this generates impacts.
Impact fees are always generated with building permits, correct?
And for example, we don't charge park impact fee on commercial development. It's just the way it's structured.
Okay.
Why does this, oh, I see, maybe, is that the interest at the cemetery? Because it's, the cemetery perpetual care unrestricted is different than the cemetery perpetual care.
So it's non-spendable and then you've got a section that's spendable.
Gotcha. Because the 55, 55,000 is spendable because it's what the interest come, the interest that comes from the 694.
55, I think, is the library.
Yeah, it's not below that.
And if you recall, we're, we're spending some of that perpetual care this year for the irrigation system improvements at the cemetery. So we've designated some of these already in the current, in the current budget year. When you go back to unassigned, 7.7 million dollars, it's at your rainy day fund. That's money to use for other purposes, but kind of your, and their advantage is to have a good fund balance. Because of course, you can have interest earnings and different things there. Any questions on the governmental funds?
Just, just to kind of help put it into my head. So this is the rainy day funds that they all, what do we have in capital improvement funds right now? I'd like to add the two together so that I know, okay?
You can go to page 95. You said 95? 97, I'm sorry.
And this is 2024, so you're gonna give us numbers for
Yeah.
Yeah, so these are added in the
Or today.
Year to date, yeah.
I just want to put the two together to kind of tell me where we're 97, no?
97, yes.
Did it go under the card something else?
Whoever finds it, wins the prize.
Is it 96?
96?
Yeah, is it 96?
We'll find it, but if you can look up, there we've got listed, you can see the 712,000. That's the assigned in capital project, Mike.
That's what's assigned out, all right. I want to try to find the balance.
That is the assigned balance for fund balance for capital project.
Oh.
That's the
That's the full in fund balance.
Yes.
Came from somewhere, right? I'm gonna find it. Okay, any questions on governmental funds?
Here's the digital one. Is this the digital one?
Page 112.
It's missing. The manuscript. Can't believe you heard that, Martin.
Someone's sticking up.
112 here is in the
Who asked the question?
So what it says though, it says that there is 712,000 assigned, but there's a total of 2.5 million in the total capital project. Correct?
Sounds right.
What does that difference mean?
So it means that the restricted projects that are already done.
Okay, that's where we are. In the capital projects fund, you've got restricted fees, your park impact fees. And you're gonna go to capital projects fund, which is the second one.
I just found, I just searched capital projects, I'm gonna find a balance sheet.
Well, excuse me, that's right here.
Where?
We're looking at page 33.
Oh, wow, back to the 33.
See, general fund, see capital projects fund?
No.
On the different columns. Oh, yeah, there, right there.
So you look at your total fund balance of 2.5, and you've got money
It's early.
Yeah.
It's early.
Someone's retiring this year.
So if I got my, my fund balance here, in like general fund, it's 7.8, and then it says capital projects, 2.5. That means that 2.5, I should subtract that from the
Separate funds.
Okay. Okay, so we allocated out of that fund into capital projects, or out of some fund into capital projects before? Separate funds, separate accounting, separate purposes.
Yeah, so all the way to the left, the total governmental fund is 28. I mean, all the way to the right. It's early.
No, no, I got
For the capital projects
The sad thing is I naturally ask this question.
That's just only for capital projects, even though it's included in the total.
Because it's part of governmental funds.
Okay.
You could transfer it.
We can transfer it, use it for like general funds, one-time expenses.
It'd just be like the rainy day.
Only capital expenses at night.
So for example, in capital projects, when you've got a million dollars in park impact fees.
Yeah.
You can see that.
Yes.
Real estate, sort of. Sorry about that.
We actually have 8,200,000 in road.
Right. A lot of that's being spent currently.
Yeah.
For two blocks.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense on governmental funds. There are several governmental funds. They each have their own fund balances and their own restricted monies. Let's go to page 37. Now we're going to look at enterprise funds. And it's it's shown a little bit differently. It's called net position rather than financial, or rather than fund balance. If you go all the way down, you can see you've got your water fund, your electric fund, your stormwater fund. And you've got some other non-major funds that are on page 102. If you look at net position, you can look at unrestricted there underwater. There's 2.6 million dollars. Go down water, all the way down to the bottom. And you can see electric unrestricted, 7.1 million. Storm, 1.7 million dollars. And then the row above that is restricted for impact fees. So you're collecting impact fees and they have to be spent for impact fields or projects. So for example, under electric, you can see that 2.2 million dollars for impact fees that is being spent on substation improvements for year and future years. So again, as far as financial position, pretty strong for your enterprise funds as well.
Well done. Awesome.
And you could flip to page 102 if you wanted to see the other
They're on the slide as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, 38.
So you can see sewer, pressure irrigation and sanitation.
What did you say, 210?
102.
My 102 looks
We gave you a different one.
Oh, there's my 102.
So again, you can look down and they're called non-major because most of those are contract services. We don't, we don't necessarily have much operations there.
Let's see, any one of those, those, I like, give it to me.
What is the net position? Yeah, what is the net position on pressure irrigation and sanitation so high, yeah? I mean, is it, are, are those things that we don't spend?
They're investment capital assets.
Mostly investments, yeah. So there's no, it's not cash and bank?
No.
And how do you know the difference between cash and bank?
You can look at, it's cash, yeah, cash equivalents. At the very top, you see cash.
Okay, so I want to go back and look, did we have that cash equivalent on this one too?
You've got a pretty good cash balance of sanitation. So when the district comes and says you need to raise sanitation rates, you can make a decision, well, maybe we don't because we've got pretty good money there. Or save that money when it comes time to buy new street sweeper or some, some other things. Or you have to go through a process, but you could transfer some of that money to another purpose.
Little caution there, waste management, our situation might change over there, so big way.
So it's good to keep it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is it, this is just so, before we go move on, why do we have to, I'm gonna go back to pressure irrigation. We don't own a pressure irrigation company. Why are we so healthy in pressure irrigation?
We're not super healthy. We're only 17,000 dollars healthy.
Up here, you're talking about the cash.
Cash equivalents, most of that's
But the total net is, but we have unrestricted 33,000. But the net investment, what does that mean, net investment?
They have capital assets.
We don't, we don't own we don't own secondaries in infrastructure, so I'm trying to figure out why there's 3.7 million dollars in something we don't even have our own.
Water shares.
Cool, that's not a bad thing.
Water shares?
That's the, those shares that purchase from Weaver Basin and all that future water.
So the ones that have been turned over to us as a new development comes in, they're required to turn over
Yes, we can't sell them. Well, we get to buy water with them. So we, we, it helps to reserve water for a lot of
So we're not independently watered situation, we can only have one source.
What?
The water shares just allows us to buy from Weaver Basin, right? So if they have issues, we have issues.
Well, it's diesel irrigation company shares. I'm sorry, we would never want a single point. It's water shares that we own, that we allow to reuse in the secondary water system.
Okay.
Okay.
The lady didn't have to, we, the lady didn't have to pay for it.
Yeah. Okay, last thing I want to take you to is page 65.
Sort of feel like you're setting us up for something, giving us
Information.
I know, I know. Yeah, you know, and then all of a sudden they go, all of a sudden we'll fall out of the we're gonna die.
I know, we're talking about financial position. Okay, last thing on financial position is page 65. And we want to look at, okay, what do we owe?
Yes.
You know, what, what are our liabilities? If you go down halfway through, you'll see long-term debt liabilities, it's the governmental activities. We've got bond stable. We've got sales tax revenue bond, which we paid off this year. That one was done. We have used parking back fees to pay those bonds. And then we still have lease revenue bonds for City Hall and for the police station.
We're in a good position.
So, okay, so as I'm looking on City Hall and Police Station in the 23, so that's 3.2 and 2.8 million for each of those. And that was, that was, that was in 23, so we're down, yeah, okay. And you can look above for more detail. For example, just above there, you see the police station. Yeah. You can see the principal that you owe, the interest that we owe, and the totals. And we're paying 1.62% interest on those bonds. So that's what you have to, you know, pay those off.
One of those paid off.
That one is paid off June 1st, 2031. If you look above, it'll, it'll say the pay-off date.
Oh, that's right.
And then you look at the City Hall on the left side. Interest rate of 2.14%, paid off June 1st, 2031.
Are you looking?
Yeah, where are you looking at?
Oh, on this side.
On the page 64, that's the City Hall.
Cool.
And then other long-term liabilities, go down, fire truck, we paid that off in fiscal year 25. You can see we paid off the mower and the ambulance in 24. So really, no other long-term liabilities. Well, with the exception, we did, we did enter into a wider area mower again for 25, so that one will, will show up on But it's probably, you know, a slight increase of that is probably like 20, 24, okay. Yeah, so that's governmental. If you go down to business-type activities, the city has no, no debt, our enterprise funds, which is unheard of. So you're in a very good position if the city wants to go out and issue debt for enterprise activities. For water, for power, for storm drain, for those kind of things. Which, I mean, you have to come up with revenue to make sure that you're but you don't carry debt, so the underwriters would say, yeah, not adding debt, new debt.
So, and, but you, you named it for certain activities. Some lines we pushed off, you know, like fire station or
Fire would be non-enterprise, but yeah.
Yeah, so it's
It'd be more like water line, shop improvements, operation center improvements, which we've talked about.
Okay, so that's one of the ones we've pushed off because we haven't felt comfortable.
But you'd be in a position, because you're not having, don't have a lot of debt. If you wanted to issue bonds for operation center improvements, you could do that easily.
Improvement in your buildings.
Yeah, building improvements.
But to keep a, go into a vote or something like that, we'd do MBA, right? Just building authority bonds rather than go into
Revenue bond would be, enterprise would be, most likely be a utility revenue bond, which is not a loan.
Okay.
Nor is a MBA lease authority bond.
Hey Dean, what funds, if we want to do the ops center, I mean, I know we talked about power, but are there other enterprise funds we could use for the ops center?
Yeah. You do something, I would recommend that you would issue revenue bonds and have that debt supported by all enterprise activities in that building, which would be water and power.
Which we just looked to see and they are pretty healthy.
Which is somehow healthy. So say if you, if you use X million dollars of those and you're instead of bonding for 30 million, you're able to bond for 25, I'm throwing numbers out there. Or, or you bond for 30, but you make payments out of those.
Spread the capital cost over
You still do the bonds.
Keep, keep your cash so you can invest it, but spread your capital costs over several years.
You've got your payments going.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the takeaway on your financial position is strong, healthy. Now we're gonna talk about operations. First want to talk about governmental funds. You can see that this is kind of a pie chart for governmental funds. The general fund makes up about 64%. And the third side, the road fund, which is about 26%. And then you've got some other, other funds there. ARPA will, will go away after the next couple of years. And again, the funds are set up to account for certain activities. The road fund, the revenue sources would be your C-1 monies, your transportation fees.
That's the 45 days.
Okay, that's a kind of give you a break out there. Put page 35 now. Okay, and again, this is looking back six months, seven months. But you can see this is a revenue and expenditure statement. You can see your funds across the top and you can see the first of the page are your revenues. And then you can look at your expenditures. And then about two-thirds down, you can see And then about two-thirds down, you can see your excess or your deficiency of revenues over expenditures. See where that?
Yes, yes. It says with two point four million.
So for example, the general fund for two, thirty of two thousand twenty-four, we had twenty-two million dollars in revenue, we had twenty-one point eight in expenditures. We added two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for our fund balance. So revenues were higher than expenditures.
That's good.
That's good.
That's true, yeah.
One of the real differences this year is if you, if you go up and look under.
Road.
Revenue earnings. Look at the line, investment earnings, can you see that?
Revenue earnings.
Investment.
Okay, we earned one point six million.
General fund brought in eight hundred thousand dollars in interest this year.
Wow, that's, that's a total brought in.
That's quite a set, yeah. I, I, my life, I've never seen the kind of interest that we've been able to, to capture last year and a half.
We're investing in, that's good.
Yeah, we're investing in PTIF and CDs, but in interest right now, we're earning five percent on our money. Whereas two years ago, we were earning thirty basis points or one and a half percent. So, I mean, for twenty-four, that, that really helped us a lot to have that kind of investment money. Look all the way across, general fund, one point six million dollars in interest.
This is all, all this is made in the same pot?
Yeah, all, we, we pull all our cash together, and then we, we invest it out, and we invest in the public treasurer's investment fund. And then with Morton Financial, most of it is money market, money markets and CDs. And we're restricted all we can invest in.
It says we got, the balance at the end, we got twenty-eight million dollars.
Okay.
So if you go down to the very bottom, you can see your fund balances at the beginning of the year, and your fund balance at, at the end of the year. So, in, in every case, you gotta make a reason.
Except for roads.
Capital cost roads.
Yeah.
But those are being covered by those, the funds that we had in there, yeah.
The theory, capital projects don't generate any revenue.
Interest maybe.
So real quickly, maybe just go to page eighty-three, and we won't spend a lot of time on this, but. This, this takes your revenue in comparison with what your budget was and what the actual amounts came in at, so the first page is revenues. Maybe just one, one highlight there is building permits, you know, we, we estimated six hundred thousand dollars and three hundred thousand came in. So in that case, we, building permits have dropped off because of high interest rates, but high interest rates are helping us with interest. Kind of a trade-off. And then next page are expenditures by, by department, and then goes through each of those funds, so. Anyway, that information is there and available to, for you to look at.
So it appears like in our burial fees and cemetery lots, we're losing money.
Which is what Paul said.
So maybe that's one of those we look at, raise the fees a little bit.
Okay, page thirty-eight, if you're ready.
That part, John.
And if you're ready, I'm not looking.
Well, this is, this is the one John's been talking about. Now we're going to look at enterprise funds. When you look at operating revenues, look at operating expenses, and then you look at your operating income. So, in, in every case, our utility funds on an operating basis, lost money.
Yeah, yeah. We're talking about the transfers out, secondary operating income loss.
Operating income loss.
So, okay, so just kind of to bring it, okay, it says. Purchase of water and power under operating expenses, it says that we purchased thirteen million dollars worth of electric, sorry, sorry. We, we purchased water and power, all that's together, sorry.
So, hey Dean, just a quick question, and I know this, this might sound silly, but where we lose money, but we increase. We're, we're really healthy on each, each of these funds, we're extremely healthy on like our. The other page shows.
Fund balance.
The fund balance, right?
The balance sheet, the balance sheet, we're healthy.
Right, but I guess what I'm curious about is, does that mean we're drawing, are we drawing too much or putting too much away into the? Okay, so it's totally different, is what you're saying, so we don't, we don't take the money that comes in as a charge and split it up and give it to different areas? So it's totally separate. Okay.
So when you look at a financial statement for enterprise funds, the question is, are your rates sufficient to cover your operating expenses? And, and we're seeing it's, it's probably not.
No.
Probably isn't.
So help me find out where this would be in this book, okay? Cause it says right here that my purchase of water and power were a total of fourteen million dollars. Where do I find the revenue for my water and power?
Above that.
Above that.
So metered sales.
Okay, that's, that's both of them?
Yep.
Okay, so it says that we, our revenues were twenty-two million.
Could that have been storm water as well?
So you look at individually, so, so water brought in three point five million dollars in metered sales, electric bought in seventeen million dollars, something like that.
Yeah, it does, and it looks like we actually, I thought about raising the rates and that, but it looked like we brought way more than, than what we spent. But that didn't include the operating costs, that, that's just sales, okay.
Now, obviously, one thing that helped on your operating losses, you brought in other revenue like investment earnings, which, which helps soften the blow. But the point still is, your rates are probably not sufficient to cover your operating expenses, something.
Why would this column not include the interest earned in those accounts?
Yes, non-operating, that's not a rate.
So you don't get accounted as part of your revenue?
You do, it's down below. Under non-operating revenues.
And with the investment earnings.
Cracks game until then.
That's why you're changing that position, so where our change in that position was three forty-nine, three ninety-four, and even though we lost two ninety-six up here, we're still.
We're still.
In, in the black.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, but you, you. An enterprise basis, so you, for example, capital contribution is a non-cash entry.
It's just, it's just to increase the value of the land that you own. Is that sort of the bottom, is it change in net position, four hundred thousand deposit? Can I ask a question, um, so, at the very, on operating revenues, where it's just treatment and service charges now, but. That is, is that just a, we're seven point four million once?
Is that the sewer, cause we contract out for sewer and pressure irrigation, so we're paying those companies.
That's a lot, you guys, that's, that's a lot, they're very toxic.
We have this, we're collecting water, it's a service charge, and then down low, drop.
So we're contractual services are six point eight.
Yeah, so seven point four is like our sewer fees on the utility bill, and then the six point eight is.
We say, so we actually have a positive of six, okay, that's where that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I think when you, you look at, an enterprise fund, you need to look at. You look at the revenues and expenses, you also look at the, the cash flow on the next thing. So, you can see, what really happened to cash, at the very bottom, not the very bottom. You can see the net increase or decrease in cash. So you can see, you know, how, how that cash went out, acquisition of capital assets, you spent two and a half million dollars, electric fund for capital assets. So your overall cash went down five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Could this be because we bought those transformers?
Yeah, it is, that's where.
So next year it wouldn't be the same, we wouldn't have that capitalized.
Or, or what, it depends on what.
Depends what we do.
Yeah, depends on what we do. Yeah.
What did we decide to do in twenty-five that would, we're halfway through. We're doing the substation improvements in twenty-five at that same level.
The substation?
Actually, looks really good.
So when you, when you look at the statement of revenues, also look at the cash flow.
When you figure the capital projects we did, this looks really good.
Okay, that's.
Dean, can you remind me what the non-major funds are? I, I know you said it and I can't, sewer, storm, pressure.
Sewer, not storm.
Oh, sorry, sanitation. Sewer sanitation, pressure irrigation.
Those are on page, on page one oh three.
Pressure irrigation, yeah.
Okay, that's a summary of your financial position and your financial operations as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, so it's looking back.
Huzzah!
Now we're gonna look at twenty-five though.
So, so let me, um, because with the capital projects, with what we've done with the power stations, substation, you know, transformers, and only to be down a million. That's probably what we expected, if you would have, if maybe even a little more, you know, that we've done, did better than we thought we might. Am I wrong in that?
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. And, again, interest earnings kind of.
Which we didn't expect.
I mean, not to that level.
Yeah, I mean, once you were able to get in, get the money invested, but that's not something you would ever.
It's something I wanna state order.
Okay, we're not gonna spend much time on this. This is what we call an interim financial report summary, what it really is, it's taking, taking this that we do every month by detail, and summarizing it to this.
Do that every month, Dean? You're awesome.
Does AI do that?
We're in.
Yes, it does, I just drag and drop.
He's awesome. So the first page is governmental, general fund. And you can see we're pretty much in line with budgets all the way across there. If you look at those that are highlighted, that three oh six and that seven ninety-eight, that's where current year, we've said, we're gonna take some of that fund balance from. What we just talked about, twenty-four and using it, current year.
Yeah, we decided, yeah.
So, we're, we're doing that. Again, you can go through the fund, one for highlighted, you can see where we're using fund balance. Again, I'm not gonna.
So, and like I said, so we're faded, you know, so it would, forty-eight percent, forty-five percent, we're six months spending, so that's.
We're, we're in line, we're.
We're in line with.
Still on four, six million healthy.
Okay, we'll skip. We'll move on that unless you have questions, and we're gonna talk about. New trends right now in relation to where we are in fiscal year twenty-five, and that's sales tax. And property taxes.
Yep. Anytime it's up on the screen, it's gonna be this.
Yeah.
Sales tax related by month, by, by fiscal year's last. So, this is the total, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I want to think, do we have some pretty good increases on that? But the year-over-year increases are falling off.
Yeah.
Oh, they're down a lot.
Did you know how many people were spending in COVID, and then the thing, we only dropped seventy thousand dollars, like, very surprising during COVID, just. People just sitting home and just spending like crazy, we're not seeing that.
Yeah, the stimulus checks.
That gas made us.
Here, our concern is, we may not even hit last year's revenue numbers.
Yeah.
And we may not even hit budget numbers. That, if, if these amounts are equivalent to the same amount received last year.
You're usually pretty cautious with your estimate in the budget, right? Like you leave a pretty big cushion.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, since this is sales tax.
This is the one thing we kind of use for one-time spending.
You know, this goes right to the general fund. It just goes right to the general fund.
Your primary revenue source is the general fund.
Wonder what happened in November? So the big deal is really in those November years, because other than that, they're pretty, they're, they're over. You know, July, September, October, those three months were significantly higher.
Guys, I can only hear one conversation.
I still think, I think, I still think we're gonna hit budget.
Yeah.
But we're, we're not.
We're not growing.
Not growing. And if you look at the forecast. From people. Forecast is about a one and a half percent growth rate in sales tax. And, and that's what they presented to the legislature, that's why legislature's kind of panicking a little bit too about revenues.
Who was ours in the whole? The one half percent on the state level, but what?
Be the same.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's what they want to increase, or that's what they?
That's what they're saying, that's what they're projecting.
Dean, does it normally correlate with the cities?
Cities, absolutely have, yeah, because. The sales tax pie, a portion of it goes to the state, a portion of it goes to the city, so that correlates sometimes. Any questions on, on that?
Yeah, truly, I mean, you know, you wonder what happened in November, because you look at the last twenty-two through twenty-four, how it was, went, went up, and then now, this last November was below the twenty-three.
I think instead of going on Amazon, people are going in person. They can jump into their cities and.
Yeah. But I just, but you know, October was a banner month.
I can tell you, November was painful for our family, so who's, like, our family, for anyone else, that's probably why spending went down, it's cause it just.
It was November especially.
I just feel like inflation finally like hit all the accounts, like you feel like you were going, you were doing okay, and then it just like.
It's one of our water bills.
Christmas was coming and you were like, holy cow.
Are those months actually based on actual spending that month, or is that just a revenue collection date? Cause sometimes those.
These are the actual months.
Actual months, so that's what there's.
We backed it off, so. Those are your actual months. There's a two-month lag, but we, we've decided to.
I wonder if there's a correlation. Down Christmas.
Well, that's.
Okay, any, any questions on that? The next thing we wanna talk about is property tax. This is the same chart we provided last year of where we stand.
The highest?
As far as the tax rate.
Get that on record, Cliffield's the highest.
Oh my gosh, Cliffield's the highest, wow!
That was Mark spending money.
And I'm amazed that Laten is so low, is that because they have so much commercial?
It is interesting though, when we're looking here, the highest, the city with the highest sales tax per capita is West, uh, sorry, not West Point, um, West Banff. And they got the Costco. Well, they got the Costco, it's a big one, and the car last year, but surprisingly, they're pretty high up there in.
So high property tax.
When you compare it to last year, I think we were in fourth position last year, I mean, finally generous, lower than me, went through a great increase last year. Crossed, you had, um, Turkey did a pretty big one last year.
You know, an interesting one for me is.
You know, an interesting one for me is Banifol because they seem to be doing so many projects in their city constantly. And I'm curious how they are able to.
Oh, I want this on record. Because they get to put money from their power fund into their general fund.
It's over a million dollars a year.
And that makes a big enough difference.
Yeah, they just rely on it. Right there. Yeah, it's just that their general fund depends on it and they just automatically do it. It's not a boat every year, it's just.
So the next slide to put it in context, maybe a little bit. If you take our certified now, you have a five hundred thousand dollar revenue increase. A six hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. It'd be a nine percent increase, so about four dollars a month. And then you can you can see the correlations here, so you can look at what what the total tax rate would be and then compare it to.
Oh, as I looked at what you've shown so far, I kind of almost feel like. This is maybe okay, but it looks like we're lacking in our enterprise funds.
Well, I think we need to look at the budget before we.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, this from what I'm, this from a high-level thing is.
My my biggest concern is probably utility rates.
Yeah, that's where I, and that was enterprise funds.
So you're. You can see an awful lot of.
So this chart is what is maybe being recommended? Is this what you're?
No.
No, this is just an example.
Yes, that's an example.
We didn't want it to come across as a recommendation. We wanted to do an example, to know how it works.
So, yeah, you can use the table below to kind of see if we increased it where we both live.
On every every land.
Yeah, with the other cities.
What are you using for all of you? You're using that three billion?
Go back one chart, please.
I'm curious where that would put us.
So we'll, so that would put it right around where center pillars. Right, they'll put it somewhere middle if we did the one point. I'm just looking at.
With that. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, I I really like the bottom because it gives the weather.
Different amount, yeah.
Okay.
Mike, what's your question?
No, I don't have one.
Okay. Oh, great.
I'm just saying that that certified tax rate is based on that three billion valuation. So like if inflation said that the valuation was four billion next year, then the certified tax rates would probably go down. To get, so you get that equivalent.
Well, you can still hold the rate for an increase. Instead of lowering it.
Yeah, you can hold it for an increase. Also five hundred thousand.
Hey, enough on that one?
That's an helpful chart, thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful. I wouldn't mind seeing a little more detail.
More examples?
More examples.
For different property values, are you saying?
Uh, no, this is assuming, I'm just kind of.
Okay, I think that's all I have in regards to.
Taking right up into the sunset. Hey, where are we at?
Not yet.
Now we go into fiscal year twenty six.
Save the bad news for the.
No. It's great news.
So we're gonna cover capital operating. We did the Waterworth model, we contracted with them, as you might recall. They're kind of helping us look at our future. Needs and in our service or enterprise funds and especially well, water and power, the two that we're looking at now. So we're gonna look at that model. Mission statement, so we're. Let me come here every day to make life better in Kingsville and we do that by providing better services, efficient, equitable and effective services. And.
I still wish we could get that one.
For the company, it's called Waterworth, the camera, was that the company you presented to us?
Yeah.
Uh, it's called Waterworth.
Waterworth, yeah. They created it as a as a water utility kind of. You know, model, and then they kind of expanded it to other ones like. All right, so these are the, there's really the few big brackets, I guess, if you move the the budget. Uh, operations, employees and capital. When we were in our computer plan working session, uh, we spent a little time on the capital stuff. We didn't get too much, get into employees and operations, but we'd like to kind of revisit some of those since they're such huge parts of our budget. We are a service organization, so you know, majority of our operating budget is is employees. That's what we do, is provide services and help people. So next slide. Infrastructure, so. Kind of just revisiting. We do this capital asset listing every year. We've done a few updates, but I think some of this will be planned to do even more as we get information back from the departments. But just to kind of highlight a few things. What changes on the fire station design or the current fire station improvements? We've had those kind of plugged in as in placeholders for the last couple of years. Those next four items, um, the restroom door locking system and police items, those have kind of been pushed a year. Weren't able to get to those projects this this year. And then, as we mentioned before, the MBA fund, we're gonna retire those debts, uh, those bonds for the police station in the city hall in. Three one and thirty four. And then let's see what else to highlight there. Um, that other than oil tank replacement, I think. We're gonna get some more information from. On that, but I think that might be going away.
Won't go away?
Yeah, the hundred thousand. They're moving an above-ground oil. Tank. So that might be changing.
And there will be a cost to that, so we don't need to.
I don't recall, Dean did.
Probably won't be a favorable.
We think that cost will go away.
It's go away. Um, you might recall, we had under the operations center improvements, a hundred thousand dollars every year for quite a few years out. And that was initially put in there in previous years just to do little things like we did the roof and we were gonna.
Those were banned now.
Right, banned it, just to keep it, you know, it's an older building and thirty years old. Uh, this year we had plugged in a hundred thousand to do some carpet and some restroom upgrades. But as you may recall, when we met back in Oc- October, um, we decided to take that money, yeah, hold off on those. Because we're looking at changing the approach to the operation center rather than that thirty six, thirty nine million dollar.
And they've been working on that?
They have, in fact, they did, um, they've been working with us, they they actually met with us a couple of days ago and did another walkthrough. Uh, they did have some staffing turnover though, the last couple of months, so it's kind of been slowed a little bit. But we're still hoping to get some budget projections here pretty soon. And so right now we've plugged in four point five million dollars at the bottom there, up center expansion.
And we're in the library, we, it's by the end, is it the end of February or is it the end of March that you're gonna?
So that same company, um, is working with us on that and. Again, another, because of the staff turnover, we were hoping to have something as soon as even this meeting, there's an early projection. But they're giving us a proposal that'll have three approaches, either kind of like a really baseline approach to the bare minimum. And then a high-end approach of do, you know, then go all out and then kind of a middle-of-the-road option, so. But we're still, I think, at least several weeks away from getting any kind of number on the library, so. You know, we put in a placeholder of two point five million, we've done some previous studies, of course, and. We know generally what it's probably gonna cost to kind of just do the seismic needs and.
Yeah.
Fix all those things, so. I don't know, Dean, if.
But probably the basic number. Well, no, I'm just, that's, I'm just, don't answer.
We're gonna be with Gilmore Bell, I guess, here next week and look at some opportunities there, maybe some. Financing options.
Gilmore Bell is a bond council fund for public finance. And we're hoping they've got a silver bullet and you can tell us, you know, an easy way to finance that building through historical credits and preservation and. And so, so hopefully we'll find out more after Wednesday.
That's cool.
And my my question on the whole thing. What is the potential revenue opportunities for building?
Probably not a lot of the uses. I would say rental for.
And then it's, and then it comes down to, I'm at the point of saying, why?
Well, because it's a community space.
I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, but sometimes I think we have to invest in ourselves in order for other entities to also invest in ourselves.
And for me with you, Perry, also, I mean, to me, the high priority is the gym by far. That's a low priority, yeah, to me.
And what? And when we get into that is.
We'll get into that as we get going, but I just want, you know, I I at least want.
Yeah.
That to go out. If I have to look at capital improvements and where to put money. That gym to me has such a higher use, higher value.
I think like the op center, whatever we do, the op center, fire station. Yeah, we can have that discussion.
Historical credits, I guess my concern would be sometimes if you use those. You have to restore everything exactly how it's built right now. I think that can limit future use just because it's not, it's not that pretty of a building, in my opinion, besides the wrong, so. I would want options inside especially.
Yeah.
Um, that seven million, by the way, that just a placeholder still, I think?
I was gonna say, it was like four.
Um, I mean.
I I thought I remember Cole saying seven.
You remember seven?
Yeah, I remember seven.
I I guess we, uh, Mayor and Cole and I met with Superintendent Linford and Tim LaFell at the this school district a few months ago. And I believe they were gonna have architectural estimates by sometime maybe this spring. And I think their plan is that they're, they wanna do this, they're gonna go ahead and start it this fall is, I think. Yeah, so, yeah. So we'll adjust that number.
I think the seventh side too, basically on the conversation.
The conversations that I've heard probably you're, was the one we could have done was two, this one's gonna be four. That's what I thought.
And then I think the reason why we put seven in, we we met with West Point, he was also doing this partnership with the district. And their number was like, I wanna say like eight or nine or something, but they were doing more than just the gym, so.
Yeah, they're having office space that the city can use as part of the, and so they're building that part of it out and so. That's why it's, but the school district said that they'll be very flexible with us.
You could put the option.
Do that.
How how we could pay for it.
So we'll we'll get a more accurate number here in the next few months. So just kind of going down, uh, maybe highlight a few things. The three hundred thousand dollars there for the Angel Street soccer complex. That equipment's been ordered, uh, should be installed by by maybe March. As you may recall, that one was one of those numbers that I think we were looking at last year. Do we try to fund that with the operations or do we pull from or with, um, do we pull from fund balance? And and we kind of help fund some of that with with fund balance. Even though that's probably gonna be a recurring need, obviously to replace that every so often. But that's on schedule. What else? The Wilderness Trail. Improvements on schedule, the Trappers Field kind of jumping down. Three point eight million. Um, the design's been done, but I think we're gonna have to talk some more about. When we wanna do that project. I I kind of think that next year is probably not gonna happen, just talking to Cole. And we'll need to talk about when we think we can afford to move forward with the Trappers.
How, just to help, how long before the restrictions would go away?
I believe it was twenty thirty-ish, thirty one, maybe?
That's what I'm ready to do.
Yeah, well, but but I think to, I think one of the things that we talked about, I don't know, if obviously we're looking at. Bird's eye view right now, but was was why not? Why don't we see how much it costs to just to grass, to sod it? So that the the entrance, well, the entrance into our city doesn't look so. Yeah, I mean, just whatever we did on the other side. I think all we did was sod. We sod the the south side, right? Well, it's grass, it's nice grass on that side, so it's like, why not just?
Have we talked about doing a phased approach for Trappers?
I think we have, yeah, I think we have, but like that, the the idea is like the. How much does it cost? Because even we seed, we seeded the the other side and it looks great. So it's like, how much would it cost to seed and obviously put in sprinklers?
Meriation, yeah.
I think that would be like a a nice.
Entry rate?
Ten-year solution.
But I mean, yeah, we're only twenty five and this might be six or eight years out, maybe more, I mean, you know.
Who would help? Kind of understand that number, that was realistic. You know, you're off to a, like you say, a progressive so much so years instead of hitting it all with a big number. Because that takes that bottom number of four point nine, which is.
So especially when you go back to the previous chart when we're, you know, op center improvements as well as library, and you know. I think they're just, in a sense, they're placeholders, but we keep shifting our placeholders.
Yeah, a lot of these have kind of been placeholders and they're kind of years out, and so we don't really do a lot of. Much with them until it gets all of a sudden the next year or two, and you're like, oh, are we really gonna be able to avoid that or not?
Another twenty million dollars.
Can we do decide to just sod it like John's suggesting? Can we at least? Put out something saying, look, we haven't given up on this, like like a picture or something like, hey, to come and, you know, maybe we're happy, we have phases, we're. You know, like I just think people are gonna look at it and be like, cool, you said we were getting a park and all you did was throw grass in and they're gonna be all ticked. But if we show them like, look, this isn't the end goal. I know that's kind of outside of the best talks, but.
Yeah.
Put phase in twenty thirty.
You're like, well, twenty thirty one, nice specifications.
That's a hard one.
Yeah, that whole thing's a hard one because the HOA, like, the HOA was responsible for needing a park, like, we've taken on basically the responsibility.
I think a lot of people don't understand that that's what's happening, though. They don't get it.
Yeah.
We'll get into a little bit later, but Park has been asking for a while for, you know, some help with staffing and and.
Real quick, you said mosquito haven, we're putting in grass without lesson.
I would think it would help, it's just me, there's so many mosquitoes out there.
Yeah. Well, what kills you is mosquitoes, standing water. There's no standing water.
But they like to live in that moist, tolerant mosquito.
Horrible.
And somebody needs to tell mosquito bait, which I will.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
So moist in there, that's where they live.
It's so fair, but also didn't. I never called mosquito bait, but I will.
Um, just moving on to the next one, I guess, uh, the city hall landscaping, this is just this area out here. Um, along the east side of the parking lot, that's. Um, yeah, just a dirt kind of area at the edge of the parking lot. We're gonna be putting in some shrubs and trees that. Maybe even a little bit of table.
Do we add any more parking?
Um, I mean.
Is there?
Where's the more parking?
Where are you, where are you?
Where are you looking at?
Oh, sorry, um.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty five.
Okay, you bowled it back.
Sorry, yeah, just right here.
Cover projects.
So is twenty twenty five things you want to fund or things that have?
These are things that are already funded, yeah.
Already funded.
Just kind of status of what's actually getting done. Info is, for the landscaping here, will be done by spring, um, on the edge of the parking lot, yeah.
Jason, where's the cemetery, uh? What do you call that?
I think that's the next, well, but. So we flushed off the memorial garden, we were gonna start that this year. And right now it's planned for, it's starting that, yeah, next year.
So if we, we might just roll over the money, we planned on it, was the money appropriate?
I think we already rolled it over. No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Oh, it was, because they were gonna do it.
Are you talking about the cemetery or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the garden, or you said the.
I mean, the, like, we don't spend it. I mean, we never, we never budgeted for it this year.
We did it, okay.
Right. Right. But it will, we are planning to budget for it next year, so that'll that'll kick it off. Um, let's see, what else do we have on this that's worth pointing out? We did the rail trail resurface, um, last year. But the six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the West Davis corridor, that that whole process has been kind of slowed down a little bit by UDOT and things. But that that will happen probably next year, though not this year. So we are getting that money from from UDOT. Around as quickly as we thought. I know Cole's working with an engineer to design some of those kind of trailhead improvements and things that we're doing. So West Davis Trail.
Something like the park lighting upgrade to LED. I'm still doing. Something like the park lighting upgrade to LED. I'm still doing all, all at once, can just phase those in instead of spending a big amount. Just, cause you're basically taking out lights that are perfectly working.
Wait, you tell the whole story and then replace them?
Like rent, something like that, something like that? I'm just saying sometimes people will bid less if they can.
They will, but I'm just saying if you broke into three years at a hundred thousand.
That would be a good impact fee project.
Yes, it would be a very good impact.
We should make notes of some of these things while we're talking.
Yeah, I'm making notes, I mean, I'll, I'll look into that, if that's a better way to do it.
So maybe we can sell it to another city, couldn't we?
I guess, Mr.
I, I.
Such an old person.
No, no, I, I agree, I agree, those still work. So why would we get rid of them?
I'm just saying.
He tried every.
That one, that one works.
I can kind of see your face.
It's, it's flickering, it didn't have all its time, it's still working.
But it's not dead, yeah, it's still in the parking lots. Adds to the holiday. Yeah, it adds to the mystery of the city.
Yeah, LED lights are great, obviously, but yeah, um, I agree, why, if there's some working lights, maybe.
Is it worth taking out and then what's to throw away?
My wife likes to call them led lights.
Oh, yeah. They're really cool if you go like to football stadiums now that they've done LED, cause they can do really cool effects like flicker and.
No, that's not news.
Whenever there's like a score touchdown, they seem like, uh, I don't know if the race cycles have.
I don't know, probably not. I mean, we're trying, we're trying conservatively.
Yeah.
They're in the full of theirs.
Pioneer Park, as we mentioned, that fund's being retired this year, so that's exciting. Cemetery perpetual fund, so, you know, all the way along, you've been by there, you've seen them tearing up the cemetery, replacing all those old irrigation lines and I believe the contract is that they'll be done with that May first and as far as I know, that's on schedule. So that's good, yeah.
Just in time for.
More of it.
Yeah. Let's see, the rail trail restroom, uh, that's over there off of Red Lane, um, that's.
Haven't seen them working on that at all.
There, you should see that really soon, um.
That's, uh. I think you're to start in March.
Okay.
I did, I think they did the pre-construction meeting this week in fact, and so that'll get going really soon and they're supposed to, I think the contract is they're done by, by June, there'll probably be a little bit of carryover there, but that's pretty much on track.
Oh.
Um, and then the new sign for Barnes Park, yeah, the digital sign. Um, that's supposed to be installed by April.
And that got approved behind because we got approved and then, uh, realized that our ordinance, the ordinance is.
We don't.
Yeah. I think that's the highlights on that, maybe next, next page. Um, a lot of money obviously being spent on Two Hundred North, um, Monholo builder, obviously underway and so far so good. Russwood, still working on that, spending money on design engineering and things like that. Yes.
So it says for Two Hundred North, it says that it's three point six million this year, three point two million next year. Those are matching funds, is that correct? There's been some grants. It's not, the, the total project to get to Fruit Heights is not seven million dollars, it's more like fourteen, fifteen, fourteen, nineteen dollars.
Um.
Caiswell City share.
Okay, that's what I, alright, thank you, cause people, I like, when people ask how much does that cost, I like to say fourteen million dollars, you know, if it's being paid by somebody else.
And that's, that, yeah, broken out into matching funds and then if you got the water part of it down below, um. And then of course you did the main street, the parking improvements with the bullabouts and I think that's been really great. Obviously, every time I drive that area, it seems like people are using it day and night, you know? People will park there now to go to the theater and I'm it was a good improvement.
Except for every other time I try to do it, I got some going all the way down the street.
Oh, really? The first food, couple of months, I, yeah, there were a lot of, I just, personally, I'm seeing fewer people.
Oh, there's fewer, but I, it happened just three weeks ago.
Oh, wow. Whenever you see somebody parked the wrong way, a parallel parking, like, ah.
This is driving the wrong.
Driving the wrong way, yeah. I had one of those, yeah. Um, I don't have any updates on the stormwater stuff, I wonder than that, but you know, if you've heard anything on status of some of those. We'll have more information on these when we get stuff back from departments, both current and, and future years. And then the fiber project is pretty well done, so that was a great project.
And then.
Just a comment, that was more than a great project.
Yeah.
I mean.
I should just.
We expect to be considering what the city was originally gonna do.
Well, all outside money.
I know.
We got, yeah. Fibers, uh, our entire city for the future, that's more than a great project.
Yeah.
That was like.
That's, yeah, I think that's something we could really celebrate that.
We didn't pay for it.
Yeah, we did pay for it, obviously a tremendous project and I mean, we've got multiple options, residents do as well for fiber connections, which not a lot of cities have. We had Google Fiber approach us. But I think we, we said, you know what, uh, we're good, we've got three, basically, I think a lot of residents have three choices on fiber, so.
At least two.
Don't think we need to tear up the streets.
Well, the next thing, I mean, when they connected to my house for zero, when it was originally gonna be about thirty-five hundred dollars. Now, I'm paying for a gigabyte per second, I'm only getting about two hundred, two fifty, but it's still.
Some of it will.
Better than what I've done with it, that would be way better.
You can still see the puck during a hockey game, right?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Although I don't watch hockey, but I can see the basketball. So.
Yeah, we, that's a great point. We've connected a lot of city services too, you know, parks, water tanks, all kinds of.
Yeah, that's the real benefit, is that we connect city services.
We've actually got that done, right?
A lot of it.
We've got everything that we like, we've got the op center, we've got our, now we've got our, uh.
Substations hooked into it, right?
Yeah, there's still some pieces like the, the water tank up on Orchard Drive area and still have that. Uh, the, uh, ninety percent of it is connected.
That's a huge benefit.
Great, very, very.
This isn't on this page, but I just thought of it, uh, so, you know, Angel, this Angel Street connection is gonna be a significant project for us. Uh, probably in their cost of four to five million dollars. Uh, we've done most of the design on that, um, but we don't have any money right now, any funding sort set aside for it. Um, we've been meeting with Symphony, in fact, um, Linda and I met, uh, with Symphony, it's not even on here yet, which is, I wanted to bring it up. I got off on a tangent, but I think this is an important one, um. You know, Symphony's not gonna pay for all that road, obviously, we, we know that now. Would have been nice, but it's just, it, you can't do impact fees because the other half of it, the, the west side is, um, the sewer district and that's never gonna be developed. Symphony, uh, we're gonna get some money, but we're gonna have to come up with a lot of money, bottom line.
I think Symphony, in my opinion, Symphony though is gonna have to hit the legislation and say like, hey, you guys, like, get some, use some of their influence with all of our state, state guys and get some money to help pay, finish that road because
Yeah.
the state already paid for the first half of that road, which they were supposed to pay for the rest of it.
So.
I think you could use a housing on it too, because I know the, there are certain areas where they won't be able to build basements and so they want some townhomes. I think that's considered.
It's just, yeah, it just like, I, I just hope that we won't have to, I guess my hope is that we won't have to.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to get to, actually, the reason I brought this up is, so, uh, we do think this is a good project for some federal funding. Uh, actually, we, Mayor, um, wrote in, uh, or we met with, was it Adam Gardner, two days ago, I think?
Yes.
And so he's a lobbyist, he works a lot with Blake Moore's office and he, I, we were really excited about the possibility of getting a pretty significant federal earmark, uh, for, for Angel Street. It's right in the, um, ballpark of what the kind of money they can get and they showed us a list of other projects that they've had funded in other cities.
We could get up to five million for that project.
No, and that's great, but I hope right now Caiswell City's playing the hand that we do not develop roads, that's not what we do. If you want a road through there, you at least have to put in your side of the curb and gutter all the way to the asphalt to the other side. And then who benefits the other side? Because we know that's what they wanna do in the future. And we need to go to the sewer district and say, you need to put up a certain amount of money to put the curb and gutter and sidewalk on your side now, or you're gonna do it later. You said that you wanna develop lots all along there, at least one lot deep, and they showed that.
They did show that.
They should be paying for that and they should be partnering with whoever is going to do that, help them do that. I think Caiswell City needs to take a little bit harder line that we don't build roads.
Right.
And, and because a developer wants to come in and build something and make a huge profit, doesn't mean that I think Caiswell City needs to suffer in their budget and fuck.
Right.
Take funds and put to a place now. If you can get grants, that's great, that's wonderful. But that is definitely not a priority in what I'm listening to.
Well, my guess, to play devil's advocate though, like, have we done that too much as a city in certain areas to where we're not getting the development we want? Like, is there in between or no?
I don't think so. When they want, when people want, they build the road, like, it's just part of the deal, or they go out and get government funding for it. The last thing I wanna say is here the city saying, well, yeah, we'll, we'll see it for example.
Well, no, we don't wanna, we don't have our own money.
No.
Right, we don't have the money, that, that's the bottom line, we just don't have the money.
No.
And, and so as much as, yeah, we'd love to see it, um, that's the position we take with Symphony, it's look, we get that, you know, you wanna come in, but we we don't have the money to put this road in unless you pay for it or something else, or maybe a federal, you know, landmark.
A question for Adam, uh, Adam, can you say his name, Adam? Is, is there a way to, uh, ask Symphony, I'm, cause I'm sure he will charge.
Uh, five thousand a month?
Five thousand a month, yeah, to be an entertainer.
And, well, uh, well, not a retainer, so five thousand a month up until we have an answer. If we don't have an answer, then we stop paying him and, I mean, when we have an answer.
I'm just saying, there may be a way to say, to come to Symphony or one other projects and say like, yeah, hey, we have a chance to get this money. But you guys have gotta pay, pay for the bill. I think they would do it, especially if it ends up being five million in road that they wouldn't have to, I mean, cause that means less money for them. But I'd rather them pay that five thousand monthly for his services than us, or at least propose it to him.
That's.
Yeah.
I don't play where we couldn't, because is that something we could ask of them?
I think so.
We could definitely ask them, the benefit that
The cost or something.
Adam brings is that he does have the ability, so I've known him for years, he does KSL, he did KSL at night, he's very connected for, for money, for, on the federal level. But he's also really good at having other kinds of conversations. Not that he would be hired as our lobbyist for, for example, shelter situation.
Yeah.
But he's very connected in that he could also have other conversations for us that where we're not making as much headway as we would like to. He, he's a federal lobbyist.
Yeah.
Um, and ideally, he would, so the, the deadline for asking for this money right now is March, March-ish. And so ideally, maybe we could retain him month to month to say, okay, yes, start asking for this. But I agree, we should go to Symphony and say, hey, we're doing this for you, you guys should pay your share for this. Cause you're doing this for your development, but also for the city as well, because at some point the city will.
Go ahead, Nate, yeah, have that angel connection that's used.
It's, it's a very huge connection and to regional benefit, so that's why, that's why Blake's office would be willing to engage. And I did talk to Blake's office, cause we have good relationships. And just said, hey, what if we just ask ourselves on our own? And they said, you can definitely do this, but it will be prioritized higher. If, if Adam can get congressional support, regional support, I'll let her do all the, the legwork to get that package together.
So can I make a point though, um, like loans, grants from the federal government, everything's on pause right now. And it's gonna be on pause for at least for the next ninety days till the first of June.
Okay.
And so really, as far as like tapping in the federal funds, I really don't think that's gonna be possible, even through, you know, Congress.
Really? Cause they, they feel like, I mean, they got some funding issues, but we wanna be first in line and I just can't ever leave office, doesn't, even earmarks.
Right now. Yeah. Yeah, but I just, I just don't think there's even Adam or any lobbyist is gonna be able to really tap into this stuff right now, so.
Maybe not right now, in the next few months, but after they have.
I would be, I would probably play caution as far as hiring a lobbyist right at this time period, but.
Well, for this money though, it's not a bad deal.
If you can't put it into play, then when it does free up, cause it will at some point, cause this is different, cause we asked him about that. We about all these executive orders. And he said, yeah, there'll be a pause there, but if we're first in line for it, hoping other cities are saying, no, let's not do it. It's a way to get that connection, which is good for the city, so.
I'm just, the landscape is not, there's not as much optimism there as there's traditionally been in the past. At least for the next several months.
Um, what we'd like to do then is, so we are constantly talking with Symphony, we can reach out to them about sharing in its cost. Um, but, uh, I'd like to bring this back to council as soon as next council meeting next week, just to, if we can get some answers to some of these questions. Then the sooner the better. If, if it turns out that these are, uh, a possibility, maybe the council wants to consider, you know, engaging.
I'd, I'd even find giving Symphony, I don't know how you guys feel about this, but I, I even be fine giving them like, uh, hey, if we don't get it, you don't have to pay, type of thing, like.
Say, we don't get it, you don't have to pay.
Saying, saying to them like, we, we wanna hire this, this lobbyist, five thousand dollars a month to try and get the funds to help pay for this road. And if, if we get that, if we get that, that money, then we, then we're gonna charge you back that five thousand.
Also, we hired Lincoln, Lincoln Hill, uh, a couple of years ago. I think we had him on for two or three years.
We stopped probably.
We, we did, we did, but they, they got us two million dollars.
Yeah.
But it was the same price, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Five grand, yeah.
No, no, two million, is it how much Lincoln got us?
No, I, I know, but we paid him five or ten.
Yeah, yeah, five, five thousand a month.
Yeah.
Um, the deal with Adam is, is not just a retainer, ongoing for a year, cause I think Lincoln's was a year contract. This would be, until we have some sort of answer, and if the answer is no, there's no earmark money, then we stop paying at that point, so. Um, in order to pay for this, we have decided to not have EDU, UDOT membership, that's about five thousand. Um, we're not gonna go to the ICSC conference, that's another five, seven thousand, so we're trying to, you know, we don't go to our NLC conference anymore in DC, so we're saving money there, so.
I still think we should go there.
Does it have once every four years?
I think we go, I think we should go once every four years, but we haven't for the last two years.
Yeah. Right.
And so.
Seems like.
Three years, we went once, three years ago.
There. How long are you gonna anticipate meeting this, uh?
Just until I get this money.
I don't know, how long do we think that's gonna take?
Up to a year, but, but it could be, just a couple of months too. As soon as we find out, um.
Right.
But this will be a council.
That's what this is. Don't, don't broke, right? Get grant money to pay.
Yeah, exactly.
I think this is, this is our opportunity to, to do it, uh, for both, for Symphony and, and all of us, I guess.
Well, and the, the benefit to engaging this is because, um, we've got the two fifteen interchange, we're trying to get it higher prioritized. If we have something that we can bring to the table, in a couple of years, it's not ready, these projects have to be shovel ready in order to apply for this grant funding. But in a couple of years, we'll have, we'll have the ability to go back and say, okay, we need ten million for this project. So that's kind of what we're trying to set us up for success.
It's a regional road, as you said, which requires a bigger width. It just so happens that Symphony's developing in an area that requires a road that's a bigger width.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we pay for that additional width.
Yeah, I agree, Mike.
We don't, they broke.
If they wanna develop it.
We take road though.
So I have a question about the county. The county said they have a lot of money sitting in a pot.
Transportation, I know, there's so much transportation.
This ties into housing, why can't we, can we put more pressure on the county to try to tap into those funds? Cause there's a lot of money there.
Third quarter fund.
We can definitely, we can apply for that, I read the list for third quarter.
I think that's probably lowering for getting longer this to go for federal funds at this point in time.
We, yeah, we've, we're trying to play that game carefully too. I mean, obviously, we're getting a ton of money for Two Hundred North.
Well, and with that money, the, the third quarter is, cause I've gone on some of the committees to, that they want you to wait every couple of years. So it's just, okay, keep looking at it, and we have to wait a couple of years and everyone.
But with the housing component tied in with Symphony, I think that really.
Only if it's identity.
The movie, I mean, they, they wanna build some identity, don't they?
Well, they want the county's feeling that.
There's certain parts of the property.
It's probably like, I don't care if we can.
Words where the road can carry there.
Yeah.
So anyway, just wanted to, sorry to, I got off on a tangent, I got that, we're talking about big capital items, so. Um, let's just fly through this next part, just put it, um, next page.
Turn it over to you some.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we are.
Everything's.
There we go. Uh, so we're spending a lot of money on. Uh, so we're spending a lot of money on power projects, no, there, we talked about Chick, uh, which is. Um, gonna be done this year, and then Burton, we're getting going on that, and thank you for, the other day for. Allowing us to to move forward with the the Burton Transformer pad and its surroundings, so. Um, we got an opportunity to save a lot of money by moving that ahead, using the same contractors.
Can I just put in a plug for how awesome the King Clarion rebuild has been, like I talked to Brian about it sometimes. And he's just talking about how they're always down and like the goalie's now replacing all those poles and things, I really think it's improving the power infrastructure down there, so. Way to go, Power Department.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
Sorry.
And Abby, that would be, that'd be good to highlight too, when we get into talking to the public about what we're doing this year, what we've accomplished and.
Point of, point of order though is that when you say King Clarion, you have to say King Clarion.
All right, uh, maybe next, next page equipments. And maybe just to put out some of the big ticket items, the uh, in-car cameras, that's a multi-year process. But yeah, that's to replace, I think the whole thing is, it's over a period of four or five years, we're spending. We started a little over a year ago.
Yeah.
This is to replace the old Motorola, um, cameras, in-car cameras and and body cams. That are no longer being made by Motorola, no longer supported. Well, it's a multi-year process, we started a little over a year ago. But we're doing a little bit every year, liquor beer tagging time.
Blue dogs, isn't it? You know, it's gotten greed without that.
Oh, yeah, I've gotten.
Yeah.
Yes, but let's let's not.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, all right.
Anyway.
Shit, I'll look again. Ninety thousand on the network switch replacements, um, I've not talked to Ryan recently about that, I don't know if you know anything.
Those are completely.
All complete.
Close to it, you know.
Okay, okay, yes, but, and then. Last page, the uh, capital asset equipments. I think the one thing I'll put out here that the change is, and this will be coming to you uh later this month. Downward, under power fund, the bucket trucks, we hadn't planned to do anything this year. We had planned on uh doing a bucket truck in FY twenty-six. We we just uh recently got a report back, um, our service. Uh, review of our current truck found that there's a bunch of things that are just uh not up to standard, unsafe.
Loose buckets.
Uh, loose buckets aren't good, yeah, so, but it's an old truck, um, and so it it's basically, uh, we, it's. Out of commission, basically, so we are, we are trying to um move up the purchase of the bucket truck from next year to this year. And so there's gonna be a a funding request coming to the council, probably on the twentieth, to to move that up if possible.
If you bring that, will you please bring how you plan to pay for it? That's the one that's frustrating.
The only way you can pay for it is through powers.
Well, I know, it's the only way you're gonna pay for it, but is it through existing funds and we're taking it from here and moving it from this to this, it's like, we had a fund balance. Just come and say, we had this money that we didn't spend, or this money, and we're gonna do it like this, pay for it.
With that, most likely, it'll be retained earnings, do fund balance, your balances.
So from the enterprise fund?
Yeah.
It's from the enterprise.
That's great. Just come with.
Just say, here, we're doing it from the enterprise fund, and and we have.
Very close.
Two million dollars, and then we're taking two fifty out of the three hundred, and now here's what we got.
We'd like to say that there there was in the fund balance, there was three million dollars.
Yeah.
This is for us, this is one of those items, it's come up, we wanna take it out of that three million, and we're gonna move it up one year for two hundred and fifty thousand this year and not next year.
It makes a very more palatable. Absolutely, yeah, we can, we can do that, good, good point. That's probably the highlight, so that, um, we can move on, if there's any questions.
Can we take a break?
Oh, sure, I'm gonna take a five minute break.
Yeah, I need a spy break.
Glad you asked, I was gonna ask for us to.
I was just gonna leave, but it seemed like good.
We're being recorded.
Okay. We're good.
Okay, um. Alright, so we talked about this water work tool that we now have, which this is we'll get into this in the future work sessions, but this is just a screenshot of kind of what this is gonna look like. So the light blue areas, the our operating expenses, projected operating expenses and then our contracted expenses for water. And then the yellow bar is our our sale revenue. So you can see that right away, just and this is only operating, this isn't capital yet. So you can see that right away, just in twenty six or twenty seven, we're kind of already not covering our operating expenses. And then the the black line here is our fund balance. So you can see that quickly goes down and to the point where we're crossing the threshold for what we want to keep on hand in twenty thirty four and then nothing by thirty six. And again, that's just the operating side. So if you go to the next slide, you got yeah, there's a capital, the green, you can see that it's much worse. But if we. The message here obviously is that we're gonna need to look at raising rates to cover our operating and capital needs. The good news, like Dean said before, is we're we're sitting pretty well, no debt, but that gives us an opportunity to bond. And I think that's the key here is that we know that it's water line replacements are very expensive. And we're gonna need to do a lot of them in the coming years, just to make sure that we have reliable services. And so again, this I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what this is gonna look like. But the nice thing is when we get into this in the future work sessions, we'll have a live model. You'll be able to kind of adjust the rates and see like what that does. So you know, we could say, hey, what if we, you know, the models recommending we raise rates X this year? What if we don't? Then it says, okay, well, you have to do it, then why next year? That kind of thing. So it just gives us that real time data that I think will be a nice tool for councils. And that was the biggest feedback point that we got from all the cities that use this model, our councils love it. It's, you know, the ability to just get some real time data to make better decisions about what the rates need to be. And and again, we'll do this for water and power. They do other funds roads and stuff as well, but we're just starting out with water and power this year, so.
So Jason, the capital improvements that show, you know, like nine nine million in twenty seven and, you know, over over ten, maybe eleven million in twenty nine. Those are things that are already on the books to be planned.
Yeah, those are in.
Those were in the, those were in the, yes, okay.
That's where I came from, yeah, that when we looked at the capital asset listing a bit ago, so.
But I thought they don't leave it out, it's like the one in twenty seven, I don't think, didn't glad twenty nine didn't show, but.
No, it didn't show twenty nine, yes, it is off that schedule.
But it's already, okay, never mind, thank you.
And that you're gonna populate that too, as we get farther out, it's not like we're gonna be all done, you know.
Never done.
Whenever that, right? But this is, it's a great model and we're excited to use it so far. It's been really good working with the company too, so thank you for letting us bring them on board. It will be really helpful for us. So that's that, you can just a snapshot of what's to come. I guess maybe the next slide, operations and maintenance. What else can I mention on this?
So this was just a talking point that it's gonna come, more of this detail will come from departments.
Oh, right.
Once we meet with them.
That's right.
We can assume increased expense with inflation and things like that.
Oh, right.
And then at that meeting on February fourth, we talked about additional operations, but other things like sidewalks.
Oh, right. And dude, I know you've you've brought stuff up too, with, you know, operations and maintenance, like just, you know, keeping up on the street striping and crosswalks and stuff like that. So that's also part of this discussion that we'll we'll be getting into. But that's part of what'll come from department heads too, as we kind of get the requests back. So the one that everyone's been waiting for is. Or personnel, start with health insurance. We had some good years, but last year was a pretty, this current year is a pretty tough year. As we met with GBS, our broker. I was actually surprised that it was even higher this year. And a lot of the big shock claims, some of you are aware of just kind of the big, we've had some sick employees sadly.
Assuming a ten percent increase in twenty six.
I I I think so. Yeah, if not even higher.
Yeah, ours is like.
Our loss ratio is not running very well, feet.
I think it was a hundred and eighty six percent or something, yeah, so we're we're paying out way more in claims than we're bringing in. In in premium or the health insurance is.
We got a sick bunch?
Yeah.
You've probably heard, we've got a few sick, yeah, people in the city, very high claims and.
Yeah, really.
Okay.
It's and that's what it's for, we're glad that obviously we have that for people when they really need it. But we're expecting some, and some of these high claims that we saw for, you know, that were that we recently seen, they weren't even reflected in that that nine percent increase from last for this current year. So that's why we're thinking we're gonna see that plus the new claims coming in. So again, just to be prepared for probably a ten plus percent increase. Another big piece of personnel is of course employee compensation. We've always reflected with the, you have the URS, the CPI, social security. And that's running around two point nine percent is what we're recommending probably this year. And the reason why we we try to keep up with COLA is because. You know, we're always looking at where we compare to our peer cities and in trying to retain, attract and retain employees. And in my view, we never wanna get too far behind, you know, if we're setting the goal that say we wanna be kind of in the middle of compensation. Keeping up with COLA kind of helps us keep keep our ground and not kind of fall behind to where we have to catch up later. So that's kind of the thought there. You can see too that, well, maybe next slide, unless you wanna, anyone wanna talk about this for a second?
The only thing I wanna say is I know that we went through and you guys provided data. And I don't know if any of the other council members got feedback on this, but I did from several cities. That because what we did to our police officers, they had to go back and do that to their police officers. I got a thing that you you took yours and made them, I'm not trying to sit, but it made them on the scale of comparison. They were like one of the highest paid in the state. And then I think a lot of the other cities got a lot of pressure. What I thought we were just bringing them up to kind of par, and what I got from the other cities was you guys killed us. Because now we have to compete with what you did. That's what I wanna make sure we're not.
Right.
Okay, just in fairness.
Very good point. I we never wanna get into the cat chasing its tail kind of thing with cities, and I think that can happen and that and honestly.
It was like we've been doing for years.
It's, I I I know a lot of cities set their goal of, hey, do you wanna be seventy fifth percentile or the highest paid city? I mean, I know there are cities in Davis that say we're gonna be the highest paid or ninetieth percentile or whatever in the market, which is, hey, if that's what you wanna do, great. We're not gonna compete with that, never will. And I think it it's it probably would be a bad situation if we got into that trying to outdo other cities.
Right, but I think that's, it causes some issues for other cities while.
What we did with police, yes, and and I wasn't here obviously for that, I don't know how that discussion all played out. But I would, I personally would never wanna say, let's like be the top payer or even close to that, cuz I don't think we'll ever be able to afford that. We we're not, we don't have the kind of revenue that maybe Farmington or other cities that have a ton of sales tax deal, so we're not gonna compete there. But we we do wanna be competitive enough that, you know, we're just not completely focusing on we're bringing in employees, training them, and then they're going off the second they get a job, you know, somewhere else. Cuz that's the cost due us as well. And it's the service liability too, that if we're unable to to keep qualified people that have been trained and and understand what they're doing.
These numbers starting to come out yet, twenty twenty five?
Yeah, sorry, it's in the top left.
Oh, this is currently what they're looking at?
Yes.
So we're finally kind of balancing out. So where we sort of used to be, somewhat, right? I mean, it used to be in the ones, but.
Three crazy years.
Yeah. Just up here in this box right here is what these.
It's protected.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, that it it inside that taper out or get back to.
You know, the other end of these, I I think the counties.
They just reported last month it's back up again, so.
Yeah, I think county went two percent.
This is just kind of what we're seeing so far with just what we're seeing with obviously COLA and or CPI, sorry, back to the CPI one. One thing we could do, cuz the way I view this is it's it's about inflation and things, but it's mostly about just making sure that we're keeping up with other cities in terms of, hey, if we're a fiftieth percentile of the market, we wanna try to stay there, not not let other cities start moving up and all of a sudden we're, you know, thirtieth percentile. So we can survey other cities and get a sense for what they're looking at doing, you know? If it's like, oh, no, we're not gonna do CPI if the average city in Davis is doing less than that, maybe we pull back a little bit.
I would, I think that's a brilliant idea to hear.
So.
Yeah.
And and of course, when I know when you do that, everyone's kind of in the same, well, what are you doing? Well, I don't know, what are you doing? So a lot of cities are on the July one fiscal year, so but I think we can try to get a sense for that.
Well, I know that when we were down at in St. George at the leading cities and towns in April. You know, that's been a great opportunity to be able to talk to other council members from the cities and see what they're thinking of. So, but I did you talk to city managers?
I think I I'm such a, I'm I'm a big fan of doing, obviously cost, bullets is a great tool. And these guys get paid less money than out in the out in the market, so thank you. But but also, I'm probably a bigger fan of of increasing the people who are being paid less. So those people like you're talking about that are in the thirtieth percentile, bringing them up so that they feel, the warm and fuzzies feel like they're actually, you know, have a need to lead necessarily, but they feel like they're in that fiftieth percentile, so.
More more targeted.
I agree, yeah, I said more targeted, more targeted approach to actual employees. Like if we're gonna, if we're gonna try and decide between COLA two and a half and three percent, rather do two and a half and use that money that you maybe would have budgeted to bring up salaries of people who are in that thirty percentile range. And and that's what this slide gets to, yeah, good, good segue.
That was your suggestion for a couple.
That's here, right?
And we're able to push those to be within five percent of market.
Right. Yeah, right, till sir, and and that's, that's exactly what happened, huh? That's a good.
Do they just start, they start going crazy?
Well, the reason why this is so volatile sometimes is it just takes one city, like Syracuse, for example. They are hiring eighteen firefighters and they're paying way above most everybody else. And so that means all of a sudden, you know, we were looking pretty good twelve months ago, but now all of a sudden you've got, you know, people falling into this, little bit, a little bit behind. And that's all fire pretty much, raping.
And and then, then you start, then you start talking about, you know, the standard deviation, you know, and you take that, so if that's that outside of two standard deviations, you just take them out. You know, so then you're, you're able to really stay.
Right, it's it's a completely different model for Syracuse. Syracuse used to be their policy was we're seventy five percent of. We will not pay more, their policy was we will not pay more than seventy five percent of the average or whatever.
They disliked with their average.
Yes, their comparable average.
Highest.
Yeah.
But 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 there are other people other than the fire that are in that, true, as well, or just.
There are, the majority is fire right now.
Yeah, what happened in fires, we were paying two percent of market, the fire, almost, you know, with ten percent off, just because of what a couple of the fire agencies have done. They've really pushed up wages for firefighters because they're they're scarce and they're.
I like what he says, I mean, we're the, we're like the thirty third largest city in Utah. I like taking the ten above, the ten above, throw the bottom one out, throw the top one out, come up with your average.
Sure, but there's still competitors for employees to.
That's a lead too, yeah.
Well, they are, but.
They're always will be. You know, I, most most businesses, I don't know what your retention rate is, but you know, in some areas, we're at nineteen percent attrition, you know, thank you North of.
Yeah, thank you, and, yes.
Anyway.
It's like you said, thank you Syracuse, right?
And and I I want you to know that we we scrutinize these numbers, keep position by position, Dean, Rick and I sit down and we go through and Kim, and we we pull out, you know, the standard, we take the standard deviation, we pull out some of these outliers, and we try to really focus on what is the market doing as a. There's always some weird outlier and there's different reasons for those.
How often do you have meetings where an employee makes an appointment with you or maybe one of the directors and says, I'd like a raise?
They don't usually come to me directly, but they'll come to their department head and I I get those requests, I would say at least every couple of months.
Okay.
That, hey, I'm losing people, we need to adjust this person's salary, otherwise we're, they're gonna leave. And so those, that's kind of a conversation I hear, you know, from out.
And then you can, and then one thing you can do with this graph is you could then look at it and say, actually, you're in, or actually, yeah, you probably do qualify for.
You know, yeah.
And and give, and it's an opportunity to give them something to say like, well, if you do this, then we can do that, but.
And like, you know, like we do it, what I, what I like is is you give, you keep, we say we move that three percent, but we've been moving the whole thing three percent. But what that does is for somebody that makes a hundred and twenty thousand a year, three percent for them is another forty five hundred bucks or whatever. But three percent for the guy making sixty thousand, that's not, and and it makes that gap further and further, and that's, I don't like that. I think the guy that's a maintenance worker, whatever, that's been here for ten years or so, he should be getting closer. He shouldn't be getting further and further away. These guys are compensated, our, I think our top people are compensated pretty good, okay? But sometimes I think the bottom would hurt, but when we move that graph five and five percent, all it does is make a bigger gap. We shouldn't be doing that.
Um, it depends on how you look at it, like dollar wise it does, but but in terms of market, like I always hear compensation consultants saying like, you know, you pay, you pay a gallon, a gallon, you're paying a certain rate for a gallon of milk, depending on what the market says, that's different than what orange juice is gonna be. And it's like, you know, firefighter versus maintenance worker, public works, they're different markets. And if this is what the going rate is for a police officer, this is what they're going, and that's what we're trying to match is what the market's doing, even though sometimes it may not seem fair, cuz internally they're not.
Well, what I don't like seeing is then the whole, but what you've done in the past is you'll take the whole police department or the whole fire department and you'll move them all five percent. Instead of maybe you should be moving the top two percent and the bottom half of it five percent.
But I think that's where these numbers become.
Well, we haven't done that in the past, that's why.
I think we're in your just back position, it's like, yeah, it's overall, but we've been moving the whole thing.
Or look at the market, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, philosophically, I mean, I understand what you're saying like that, I don't know if I agree. Because philosophically, those folks who are state maintenance workers, they could go do something to improve their capability and then move to some other, something else to, you know.
Right, and and I agree with that, I agree that a hundred percent, but I believe that's part of the city's responsibility. Like if they got a maintenance worker that's been in there, they send him somewhere and they teach him something more, but yet we don't compensate that bottom as much as we.
I'm saying that he can go become a police officer or become a fire stick.
If he chose.
If he chose.
We don't want him to, we want him to stay in the public works department because we want him to get better at what he's doing there, so he'll stay. We've got that knowledge in that position as it goes on, and you can ask the guy, can you remember twenty years ago when, cuz we've kept, you know, we kept, he'd say, yeah, that water line was here and there, and we did this and that and whatnot, I think there's a lot of knowledge that goes with those positions, that if you just encourage them to move on to different positions, you lose a lot of.
But there's always gonna be that ceiling, you know?
I I think there's two different kinds of things.
Like are you talking department by department?
Yes, I'm talking department by department.
Yeah, not comparing.
I'm not talking career by career, I'm talking department.
I'm gonna say though, we did have a situation with an employee who had been here quite a long time, and then was really highly paid, but his, the skill level had not increased. And so I think that there is an opportunity for people to go in and they say, well, I'm I was hired at this point and now I see opportunity, so I'm gonna go get some greater skills, and then I'm up at that level, so I understand what you're saying. At the same time, I think that's a self motivated sort of.
Sure, and I think every position in every department, like we have police officers three, we can go to police officer two, one, two and three. Well, maybe that top half of the administrative portion of it shouldn't be moving up in the same percentage as the bottom ones. If you've got a, I don't know which way it goes, is it one first or third?
One first.
One first, so if you're a police officer one, then you're gonna gain more skills, then you should move at a higher percent rate, because you're much more valuable to the city as you learn. But if you move the whole police department, that five percent.
It makes it different, bigger, I just.
It makes that gap so much bigger, and that's where I think we've lost a lot of.
Yeah, I I think.
Capital, sorry.
Yes. Yeah. So anyway, it looks like the takeaway from this is we do have, it looks like some, like firefighters, maybe this year, might be falling a little bit behind and and looking at even taking out the outliers, I think that's still the case unfortunately. The biggest concern is, you know, this retention, and we know these guys are looking, and we we know that some of that, we we're never gonna get a hundred percent retention, even close to that. So that's not our goal, but we do wanna make sure that we're keeping enough people at the core, that that whoever's going out on these fire and and EMS calls knows what they're doing. And you don't want, you know, brand new guys out there without a leader. And and so Chief Erickson's biggest concern is, you know, are we gonna be able to have, for example, a paramedic program in a few years? If if we're constantly losing our paramedics and they're going other places. And and there is a a lack of people going into that field unfortunately, so that's kind of the conversation that we're having. And then, I guess look for maybe some adjustments potentially in some of the fire positions there. But by and large, I think we're doing really well, we're we're seeing most of the people are right around that median, average mark, so.
And I really don't wanna go off on the, out of here, but that's kind of what I was trying to say at our little meeting we had the other day. I don't think it's, I don't think it should be me in here trying to discuss with you what firefighters should be paid. I think it's between the departments are gonna go to you, and then you're gonna come to us with that recommendation. And you're gonna have to be the one, cuz you're the administrator, you're the city administrator, you're the guy that sees what goes on and how to run a city. I can't tell you how much more valuable everything is to you than another, but you will be able to come to us and say, this is much more valuable to the city and this is where we're lacking, and this is my recommendation to you.
And that's, that's what, yeah, and and that will come, this is, and this is kind of high level right now, this is what's coming, but. But yes, absolutely, that is, that is the job of of my job and 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 department heads to come to me, and that's, that's happening and will.
And and I think in the past, you've had a situation where we've had five department heads come to us, and then we've had to decide what is the most, the priority. We don't work here, we we are the legislative body, we're not working here. That's where I think we have been misled a little bit in the past. Is we're sitting there trying to argue who's the most valuable, what. Is we're sitting there trying to argue who's the most valuable, what they're supposed, no, no, no.
Yeah.
You tell us that, that's what.
I, and I agree, that that is a hundred percent of my job to come to you, that's, you shouldn't have to get into the politics of which department's more, you know. That's my job, to build a consensus and have a plan that I can get buy-in from department heads first, and then hopefully the council next.
Hey Jason, I wanna go on record, whoever this person is, if it's one person or two people that stayed stagnant two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, but twenty percent below. That needs to go away.
It's just one person, it's one person, it's Kim, it's because her title changed as well.
And.
For twenty-five.
And yeah, that needs to change.
They they can't just.
And her and her job duties aside, her title changed, but her job duties changed significantly. She's taking on more and more and more.
Okay, I think that means, and it's like, she needs to know, does she know that we're gonna look at that, at least now after this meeting, at least.
Yeah.
She's in part of that discussion.
Can we love you?
Right, totally, yeah.
Do you remember that?
Oh, that's a sure.
I say I agree, you know, inside, I think we ought to do it sooner rather than later.
Can we do that? Can we do an emergency in meanwhile?
Ah, I hate that, yeah.
No, you do, you like it.
I I think, it it opens up a can of worms, yeah.
Yeah, we don't see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, it, we, but sometimes there's a true emergency, but, um, yeah, we're, I think we tell people, hey, look, every year we look at this.
Yeah.
And and we do, so.
There's a process.
So maybe, maybe like a Amazon gift card or something, saying.
We 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 do something like that too, yeah.
We're thinking of you. Yeah.
On your tooth, that's why you're wearing a pink shirt.
That's why I would be good at retention.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna.
You should be, you should be.
Oh, no, 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 I appreciate you, I appreciate Valentine Day.
Uh, that was pretty messed up.
So before.
It's gonna burn my shirt right now.
Before we leave this slide, I mean, obviously, we have to present budget to departments. Um, and so that's what that budget objective is, it's just kind of an ask of you, as a preliminary, how do you want us to present the budget as far as compensation goes?
Oh, we're doing merit.
What is he, Jason's?
Yeah, so this is what staff is recommending, Jason's recommending, but do you guys agree with that, do you?
Well, okay, so we talked about COLA a little bit, and we will go out, and I'll see if if we get any better idea of what other cities are doing on their COLAs. I think gender, by and large, most have followed more or less the CPI, right, but.
Oh.
I'm sorry, the URS.
Yeah.
And see, part of it moves back to the discussion we've had the last couple, each of the last couple of years, is that you do a COLA at two point nine, or say a three percent COLA, then a three percent merit, you're saying six percent.
Right.
And that's really, really high.
That's really high.
I I, you know, I I really, really struggle with that.
That's not the case for everybody, cause a lot of people.
Everybody's, everybody gets the, everybody gets the merit.
No, no, not everybody gets the merit, because a lot of people.
Ninety percent of the folks, maybe ninety-five get the merit.
How many are topped out?
But, okay, but there's some, there's some that have already maxed out, because you've, because they've gotten the merit over all the years. You know, that they're maxed out. Other than that, we're probably at ninety percent, if not higher, that will get that three percent.
Yeah, but all the other cities are doing merit also.
It doesn't make it right across the board, I'm just saying that you're talking six percent.
No, but on that point, um, is that right? That, I I was thinking that probably more of our folks were were at the max than than moving through the range.
There there are quite a few at the max, I don't know what that percentage is, I would get.
The answer is no.
And you get, and you get to the max because every single year, until you get your merit, and that's, that's my, that's my biggest concern with it.
We we used to have a step plan, I know, a few years ago, where it's like you, X number of years, you got to the top of the range, and so when we would recruit employees, they, you know. How long is it gonna take me to get, okay, I see your pay range, how long to get from starting salary to top salary, and we could say, well, here's the number of steps. Um, years it takes you, now it's the merit, which is more or less kind of been like that, rather than calling it a step, it's like, well, we do three percent a year, and it takes you so many years. One thing that, and this is a philosophical sub-question, I guess, a lot of cities, I think almost all cities, uh, have a pay plan that says either steps. Or you're gonna get this much merit every year if you qualify for merit, and so when they hire employees, they can say, here's how long it's gonna take you. And and that's, that's a really valuable thing, it happens, that question gets asked by recruits all the time, how long did, what's your step plan like, or your your merit plan, and. If we can tell them, here's what it is, three percent, then they can kind of figure out how long it's gonna take them to get to the top. If if that number is a, you know, gets adjusted every year, it's more like, well, you know, is it a pay plan in terms of something that we can define, or is it just sort of?
Merits. I just go, I, you're talking six percent, and six percent is huge.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and so. I, you you don't find other, you don't find companies in the private sector, or even in the federal government, that do both, that that give you six percent of you. And that's, and and I'm, and I'm the jackass every year who brings this up, you know, because it's just a lot.
Would would it be helpful if we did more analysis on, you know, how many years it takes employees to get to the top in other cities? That way at least we're looking at it from like, all right, how are we doing, and we can decide if we wanna be like in the middle of that, or top or or bottom, but just to kind of have an idea of.
I think the point there is maybe to say, if we were to change the way we did salaries, only percentage of our pay plan to employees coming in. Then then the idea would be, then you'd have to say, okay, we're gonna pay you more when you first get here, and it would cost us the same amount of money.
Why, why, so do I want every employee at the top of their pay plan, you know, at max out? But you know.
No, no, you don't, that's why we switched it instead.
That's, and that's, and that's why.
And not everybody's getting their their full merit, are they?
Well. Well, unless you're not performing, which it's.
Well, forget it, unless you're not performing, which it's.
I've, I've asked a question before.
Yeah, they all get it, yeah.
And it's, and it's, and it's, it's at least ninety percent, it's probably, you know.
By ninety-nine percent, I mean, it's mainly been a handful of cases that where you don't get it.
So, I, and I guess that's my point, you know, so it's 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 gonna be a six percent. And so then you're talking max out, and then we raise that, we raise the the max they can get. And so why do I want all my employees to be at, after ten years, at max payback? What's, you know, what's the incentive in for the merit? I see what you're saying, you know?
Well, I think their incentive is, they know that they've maxed out, and for them to grow, they're gonna have to have a different title. And and so they're, they're gonna have to gain, gain better skills, or apply for a different position. So.
My other struggle with COLA is that if you don't keep up, then you start, everyone starts falling into these, right? If you don't improve COLA, then the general payment goes down, and then everyone falls down into this, and that's kind of what we're trying to avoid, right?
Our merit must be following somewhat of the.
It's a step.
Decent, I I mean, it it must be following the other cities fairly well, because if you look at this chart, we're still staying in that area. I mean, if we, if our merit was so outlandish, then then we would be, all of our employees would be ten percent above.
So that doesn't, there has zero effect on those numbers.
Yeah, well, I guess it does, because it increases how much they get paid.
This is looking at pay ranges only, not actuals.
So if we added merit to that chart, we, it wouldn't be a fair comparison, because other cities don't add merit either, right?
Obviously, I'll do.
This is simply looking at.
The women and.
This is just looking at.
Well, could that change their numbers?
Not looking at actual pay, it's looking at.
Their pay bands, yeah.
Pay ranges.
Pay ranges, okay.
Oh, okay, I see, well, what we, what we offer today.
And this is the the maximum pay range for that position.
And is that, well, o- across the board, does that maximum pay range include, does that include a merit step from them, for their duties, or is this just base wage?
Well, this is the maximum pay range.
This base, this is just, this is just comparing, compare, correct me if I'm wrong, man, this is just comparing max salary.
Ten percent.
Ranges.
Of the range.
Of different cities, yeah. The same job title.
Okay.
And and the reason why, it's it's easier to look at that, because if we try to compare actual salaries, it's just, the variables are crazy, because you don't know how long, you know. Other people have been in their positions and all that, so this is the most apples to apples way we could find to look at, how do our salaries compare to other cities? So we're looking at the top.
Oh, I, see, this is kind of misleading to me then at this point, cause I was thinking this is what you were comparing our people to, other people being paid, but this is the max salary range of comparison.
Right.
Oh, this isn't, you're talking people.
Well, it, I think it's the most apples to apples way to to get a quick look at how do our salaries compare to others, other cities. So we're comparing ranges, whereas you were just.
Okay, if you give me that, you would have to give me that ten above, ten below, these are the cities in Utah.
Which you've already done, right? You have taken the ten above and ten below, or no?
Yeah, we we've, we've looked at those.
The one was your comparison, what did you use to this?
Which cities?
Did you pick cities, or did you go the ten above, ten below?
We, yeah, we still have an example.
We've seen that.
We'll try to.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, they're pulling that up, I just wanna, I don't know, for maybe later discussion, float the idea of possibly doing, trying to get everyone to four percent below, instead of five percent below. Just feel like, I don't know, it was just, it's not a thing, it's not a thing, but throwing it out there for the pay bands.
That's the approach we use.
Slightly more competitive.
I'm not sure you understand what you're saying.
Tell you about it later.
So, what we're doing is, this is the job title, and we match that up to make sure the description matches. And then we've got the city, the benchmark title, uh, preferred title, and then.
Last time they updated.
The data date, when we. Get that information.
That's reflected.
We don't have that data, or for a year, we assume a two and a half percent. Then you've got the minimum midpoint maximum, so what we're comparing is, is right here, so here's the, here's the average, maximum average, here's the casual city, and there's the difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we go through position by position, so we think, but for this position, latent is comparable, but for my position, it's probably not a comparable, so we, so we pull those out. Like, to various point, and we go through each position, say, you know, latent's not comparable for that position, or Clearfield lives in there.
And, I mean, does that make sense, just as a, a way to try to get a snapshot of how our our salary ranges compare to other cities? And all of our ranges are uniform, thirty-five percent, uh, right band, from top to bottom.
Yes. Do we, is the county on here, like the county? For, for some positions it is, but we didn't include that one.
This is just an example, we we do it for every position, and like we say, that sometimes you like Davis County, if it's applicable, like for GIs, it's applicable, but for something else.
And the only reason I say I like to use the ten above and the ten below, because they're usually population sensitive, which is, means they're about the same number of homes, which means that property taxes are gonna be relatively close. And to me, to me, it's a more comparison, I have a hard time comparing latent to anything we do, because their general one is gonna be so much higher than what ours is.
That's from twenty-three, every year.
That's their position.
I get what you're saying, but yet their income is so much higher than what ours is, that's why I like using the cities ten above, ten below. Cause it's population, that means it's gonna be pretty close in houses and properties and those types of things.
And that's why we pull out those ones, so we.
Okay, all right, I feel like if your, uh, I feel like if your question was earlier, looking at this budget, I think you were generally asking what maybe all our thoughts were, and maybe I'll just share mine. I think that I'm probably leaning somewhere around like two and a half percent COLA, using, uh, you know, some money to bring those positions that are under the five, maybe four percent. Does that be recommended, um, up to, up to stuff with the, with the outliers of the fire being something that we look at specifically, maybe paramedics, I mean, I think paramedics could be. Put that as maybe a higher, higher pay structure, something like that, to keep them and keep that.
So you're saying a three percent potential COLA, but really two and a half, and then some money to wiggle.
That's kind of where I am.
And I wouldn't be.
We give each.
You would, you would be, what, where would you be, two, one?
Or one and a half.
Okay.
Cause, cause you're not gonna change the, you're not gonna change the three percent merit, and so, I I don't know that I would ever agree to personally.
But from a budgeting standpoint, would you feel more comfortable if you started at two and a half rather than starting at one and a half?
I guess, here's a question.
Me, yeah.
Um, you know, that, I think it'd be good for the city to identify, what is, what is our goal, um, in terms of market, uh, competitive? You know, how how competitive we wanna be in the market, do we wanna be middle, do we wanna be sixtieth percent, twentieth percent? Um, and that way we can kind of target, you know, if it takes, if it takes a three percent COLA, if that's what other cities are doing, then, and we're. Just so that we stay, keep our place, you know, cause if, let's say, we say, all right, let's do a two percent COLA this year, but on, just theoretically, everyone else is a three percent. Now, we just kind of slid down a little bit, and we're no longer in the middle, now we're, we're kind of losing ground. And it, you know, that's fine, if if that's what the, you know, city decides to do, but I'm just saying, what what is our goal going to be?
Well, see, and Jason, that's been my frustration for the last two years that I've understood this, the first year. Um, you know, is the fact that cities don't, this is where, leading cities and towns, there should be meetings there, or. What are we doing as a whole, you know, where we're having consent, and some sort of consensus, or we're talking with the cities and say. You understand what you're doing, and we're killing each other, and so we're much more on board.
That's, that's what every, like, any board meeting, citizens say, oh, they're doing, they're doing two and a half, let's do three, so we can get all the good employees.
Well, well, we.
You know what I mean, that's never, you're never gonna change that, because everybody's gonna go back in the back room and be like.
We, we had conversations. We, we have had conversations with mayor saying, hey, let's hold our rates, and then it was brought up, okay, that could be, you could be ghosting racketeering, or. I mean, you can't technically do that, agree as, and I thought we could, I thought, okay, let's just all kind of be on the same page, and they said, you really can't. I, I don't use to me.
I just still don't think it's, I mean, it sounds good on paper, but then it's like instantly, once the side room conversations start happening, it's always.
Cause even if you, even if you go as like, if, if you go like, you're talking, you know, doing that at work, what you're doing, then you increase your rate. So as a company, then I'm increasing my rates to three hundred an hour over two seventy-five, so I'm, I'm more expensive.
Yeah.
Right.
That's for sure, it is, no, it's, it would definitely be mutually beneficial, but it's also like, the name of the game, right?
I guess that's common.
But but it, it would be awesome if we could all say, okay, let's hold our line, but I've tried, I've tried, cause it makes sense.
And I think the other question, there's a lot of cities out there are super concerned about, we're seeing fewer and fewer people going into police work and firework, and. And how do you attract, you know, kids in high school to, hey, I wanna be a firefighter, a police officer? I mean, it it's becoming really, really difficult to get qualified people to do those jobs, and so. Cities, I think a lot of cities wanna be able to say, yeah, we wanna pay more so that we can get, you know, attract people into this job. So.
I've always felt like the police, to me, like, there should be a pay range for the police officers who are willing to go to academy versus versus the ones that.
They don't pay for academy themselves.
Yeah, well, so.
There are.
That's a good idea.
Oh, there is, okay, so where they enter in, okay.
Police officer two is academy, sort of like.
Okay, maybe that's where I was always confused, I felt like we were just hiring them before they went to academy.
If we do it, police officer one.
One, sure, we'd put a few through, okay?
And this might be getting back to kind of the big picture stuff, like strategic plan, but you know, one of those three guiding priorities or objectives that we wanna talk about eventually. Other than just capital, and then we wanna talk about employees, and I think that involves, what do we want our pay plan to look like, do we wanna be fiftieth, you know, median in the market? Um, and what do we want our, our merit to look like, do we wanna move people through the range in ten years, or, you know? And we can look at other cities and kind of see like where where we wanna fall, if we wanna be kind of middle of the pack, or or something else.
I I kind of think is what you'd be in the middle.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to get at with the four percent, slowly move up to the middle.
That's, I feel, I feel like. And, and I think that's what our standard should be, we should be.
And that's where I was saying, you know, when we were talking about the grading of our taxes, and I said, we should not be in the top.
Right.
Five, we should not be in the bottom five, we need to be in the middle.
And I think that's what is, average.
Yeah.
So average would be middle, so we're trying to be, you know, within five percent of average, being within five percent of middle.
And and, yeah, that coming up to. Well, I would love it if we could all live in average or something, if I had anything, I love it, like, I mean, it's hard.
That's the one where. I mean, like.
I mean, it's hard.
You love being average, yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, it's so hard to say, I wanna be average.
The only way that somebody would move is if they were below five percent.
What did, what did. State be for COLA? We have so many thousands of employees, what did the state do, because they're pretty good.
Are they manual, or they?
I think they follow CPI.
What did they do for the, does anybody know what they did for the cost of, cause they're, does legislature do the budget right now? Are the legislature gonna do the budget? What is there going?
What did they do for the, does anybody know what they did for the council, because they're, does legislature do the budget right now, or legislature gonna do the budget, what is there going?
I don't know where they're at, I'll wait out, I'll ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have to.
We'll do it again.
Yeah.
I know, I'm not sure.
Let's not get, let's not go down the hole around the hole right now.
Yeah, let's.
Okay.
But let's go, let's move ahead.
So I'm happy.
Many meetings.
I mean, to present the department heads, we could, again, it's your guys' call, but we could start with two and a half, and then I'm happy to come to those presentations with. Here's if we did one and a half, here's if we did two and a half, here's if we did three.
Oh, that'd be awesome, yep.
I'm happy to do that, but I just would like a space to present the department heads, here's where you're at with what we've agreed to do so far. So are we okay with the two point nine to three and everybody within five percent? Or would you like it started somewhere else?
I thought you said two and a half. I said two and a half, but that but I'm not speaking for everybody, so.
We just said the two point nine to match URS.
Two and a half with the COLA, yeah.
But I'm happy to do whatever.
Well, that's with the hope that that other like whatever point four would go towards those bottom, sure, yeah.
Correct. Correct.
I'm okay with two point five if we're gonna do that, okay.
But does that get us, like what Jason was saying, just we start kinda slow, we.
Well, we'll, I think we'll see as we talk to other cities and the county, right, and.
See what they want to. See what we state.
I know that there.
This is just a starting point to create these worksheets and have these conversations.
Yeah. Right.
It is not some stuff.
So that would be my recommendation, though, just that we keep up with other cities on average, if if the average city is going at two and a half percent, we wanna, you know, hold our ground or not lose ground.
I would like to not lose ground.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start with two and a half.
Yeah.
Chief, but don't lose ground.
Great.
We'll start with two and a half, three merit, and all positions within five.
Acknowledging that Perry is not in the range.
Yes.
That I will vote against that, yes, but.
Yeah.
And I'll I'll show the different ranges as well.
But I I got it.
I got it.
Show us the ranges, that'll be helpful, wow.
Great, cause I would really like to hear what Perry is, but where 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 would you be?
I would not be hot, I would not be higher than one or one and a half on COLA.
It's a word.
Where would you be on that?
One and a half on COLA, and then would you do merit?
I don't I I don't know, um I don't know how you. Go away from the merit, I mean, I I disagree with everybody getting it, but I but it's what it's what happens.
So would you be more like merit would be one and a half, let's do the three?
Um not not if you drop the COLA to one and a half.
Okay, alright, I just wanna know where you're at.
Me personally, I'm at like a three and a half overall, three and, you know, I would not want, and not more than four.
That's right.
Between the two.
Okay.
Thank you, I that's that helps.
So I still think it's very generous, more more so than you'll see in 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 private industry or most government.
And would you still do all positions within that five percent market range?
I'd wanna see what that means, what that costs.
Maybe you'd wanna see that in a multi-year.
Uh yeah, I think you'd get it all at once, probably.
I also have done that too, like if we adjusted fire and that outlier of Kim, that cost, if we did everybody, that cost.
Good.
So I can also spread that.
That's great, thank you.
I think that'd be good.
Okay, great, well, the COLA and merit together.
Yeah, some of some of those Jason would be able to, some of those.
I love. But because Syracuse told anybody to run.
Yeah, and I wouldn't do this with a city, you know.
With.
Some of those too, I think, or to Mike's point, some of those Jason would be able to look at and be like, okay, this fire and talk to chief and be like, this firefighter definitely deserves to be up into the.
Yeah. Sure.
Zero to five percent, this firefighter, it's okay if we keep him down there.
Well, that's merit, that's merit.
But okay, we're talking about.
No, 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 merit is about raising their salary, all because you would have to raise almost there.
Yeah. I have them mutually too.
You have to look at that position, you can't look per person, that's more merit.
Right. Right, hey. So.
Okay, okay.
But um yeah, real quick, uh th- these are both important, you know, the the market or the COLA is important because we wanna be attractive. On when we're advertising positions, what their starting salary, what their top salary, you know, we wanna be competitive there. Um so if we start going below COLA, you know, compared to other cities, then we start to lose that ground and all of a sudden our starting salaries isn't as competitive as in our neighboring cities and and that makes it difficult. The merit's hard because, you know, how long do you want it for, how long do you wanna take uh to get employees through their range and and you know, that's another philosophical discuss discussion, but. You know, if most cities are getting their employees to the range in ten years, do we wanna be ten years or we wanna be twenty years or, you know, I think if we go too much lower than. Certain point, we get into that discussion of if we're only gonna do like one percent merit, I think all of a sudden now we're looking at, it's gonna take employees to get, you know. It's gonna take them twenty years or something like that to get through that range, which again, that may be the decision of the city, but I think the important part is looking at what other cities are doing, and if. We wanna be the middle of the pack, ten years is the middle of the pack, then we should choose for ten years, um if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And that's just one way to look at it.
Yeah.
Ten years to your max.
It is, yeah.
I mean, are you saying that's good or bad?
I mean, how long does it take? Now, it's about ten years roughly, right?
You're saying it's bad, it should take you twenty years to your max?
Thirty-five percent.
The man is thirty-five percent, so we gotta know where they start, I don't know why we're doing those ten years.
Tense and strict on the ten years.
I think if I was frustrated in my in my position, I would I would get some, I would do something.
Also in the industry.
I'd be looking for something. I would either, I would I would improve my lot.
I would wait twenty years. Yes, yes.
And try to get to do something else, or I would go somewhere else, and that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's, you don't find, you find very, very few people who stay in the same same company for their entire career.
True.
I think it is a good challenge to recruit and and to hire, it's expensive, there's a huge cost, but that's also the cost of doing business, knowing that people will do that sometime, right?
I'm on my third, I'm on my third one. So. I I mean, I think the industry average on uh retention, I think it's about a nine percent attrition.
Yeah.
You know?
There's an acceptable uh rate of attrition for sure, as part of, and and if you were a hundred percent, that to me would be a major red flag, that you're you're paying way too much, but.
Wasn't wasn't Leica Coke said you should have constantly be firing your lowest percent?
But messing with messing with messing with merit kinda messes with like, messing with merit sort of messes with like the precedent with which you set when you hired that person, because you basically said.
Not really, I mean.
I I thought you said that. I I I'm not, that's why I'm.
We've done a ten year analysis, we've said after ten years, you could be at this at at this point, if we start lowering merit, then we decide to that person. Hey, we hired you under the guise that you could get up to here in ten years, now it's gonna take you.
John, that's why I said, I don't know that I'd mess with merit, but I would, I I wouldn't do the COLA.
And then the issue is not not doing COLA, is that all the people who root for merit that you love, that you keep, that you kept around for ten years, now they don't get a bump when the rest of like. Society is increasing.
Write him a write him a write him a check, right, so it's seriously.
Yeah.
So then you you can't, you can't have that, you know, in your salary increase, so you you write him a check, give him a bonus merit, here's something, yeah.
As a bonus, I mean, just a one time.
Uh that's what that's what that's what I've seen in.
Yeah, but doesn't that hurt the URS for people who are in the URS? I don't know.
What it helps.
You wanna.
I don't under I don't understand, you know, what ramifications there might be, you know, or the unintended consequences, but.
It's like. Yeah. That's a. Pensions and stuff like that, anyway.
I I just.
It's it's a tough nut to crack.
I just, I go back to, you're just talking six percent basically, you know, and that's a lot of money that that we're doing on the back of our um our redress.
Positions. Right, um so this is just a summary of positions that have been requested over the years. Um you see all those positions in FY twenty-six, for example, those aren't new positions that were just requested for the first time this coming year, these are ones that for the most part have. Been requested for a number of years.
So you haven't met with the department heads yet, this is just what you've been following.
Well, no, this, yeah, good question, um I I've met with the department heads, so I know what they're asking for.
Okay.
This is just sort of a, some of everything they're asking, they've asked for for over the years, and and I my job is to say, okay, you've we've got fifteen positions that are being requested here.
Mission all of that. Oh, yeah.
Um in the next couple of years, which ones, you know, should we try to fund year one and and again. It it hasn't been fifteen every year, but you know, the last few years, we've requested a few and then a few and then a few, and we haven't funded any position, new positions in the last few years, so. There's been kind of a relative of a buildup, and my job is to try to figure out, alright, which which of these are the most important ones, um I think they all have. There's a justification frankly in my mind for most of these requests, they're not just frivolous requests. But um if you move to the next page, I can tell you the ones I think we should do, okay, the first one, one of these two, maintenance worker three. In the public works department and a meter technician, I think we should fund, um both of these positions uh can be funded. Without increasing the number of bodies, so in other words, what I mean is to fund the maintenance worker three position in in uh public works, we can eliminate one of the locator positions. Um the guys that go out and paint, you know, whenever you do a.
Yeah, I like this.
Big war, we've got two locators and that that slowed down a little bit, there's not as much um utility work or work going on, so we think we can handle that with one position, one locator. So if we lo if we eliminate one position there, we can create another position uh in public works, and this maintenance worker three is really important, this would specifically be for the water department. And right now, there's just uh, I I'll send you a medal on some of this with more information about what these positions do. But I mean, there's uh tests that they're doing every single day, um and and there's a lot more fed federal regulations on water quality. Um it blew your mind how much testing goes on every single day in the city um at every single week.
Quarter days of.
I didn't say that.
This this, sorry.
Yeah.
You're like like showering in a swimming pool.
Yeah, it tastes like pool.
But uh this is, if you ask Josh, and I would a hundred percent agree, water quality is the most important thing public works does, because it's, we're talking about safety. And and uh there's just a a ton of work that goes into ensuring that that water quality is where it needs to be. Um and we want people that are trained, that that do that testing, right now, we rely heavily on just seeing who's available and bringing people in from storm waters or roads or or wherever else to come in and. On overtime, kinda do some of that water um testing, monitoring, pulling samples, and what we wanna do is put somebody that's dedicated, that's got the training. And and can do that work, plus there's just a lot of work that needs to be done there, so again, this would be really, um not just budget neutral, but I think we'd actually save a little bit of money, cause we're eliminating the locator, is that?
Yeah, so it just shifts um from public works to power, just cause the locator we're keeping is higher paid.
It's neutral, but cross is fine.
Cross is funds, but.
Cross is funds, but but otherwise, budget, so does that make sense, budget neutral, cause we're we're just changing.
Awesome.
One position, um what I'd like to, since we're talking about eliminating somebody's job, is if if that's the case, and I'd like if the council could kinda give me some 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 buy-in right now. We'd like to talk with this person, um we already let them know that we're looking at this, but if this is the way we're gonna go, which I think we should go this way. The more time they can prepare that, hey, July one, I'm gonna lose my job, that that gives them an opportunity to make that transition, so.
You're saying, or are you saying that you would take the same person and use them to, oh, oh, they wouldn't be able to, oh.
No. That we we have frankly uh talked to this person about, you know, possibilities.
Would you be interested in swapping roles, and they said no.
But they're not, uh I think they're actually shouldn't doing that, something else entirely different, so this gives them.
Usually a different career path.
Okay, great.
Yeah, an opportunity to kinda gear up for that and hopefully get a job by July one.
Yeah, consider it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, perfect, the other one is the meter technician, so everyone, I don't know if you know Bruce Rigby, he's been.
Yeah.
In the power department for a long time, and I'm one of Brian's number two guys, uh he's gonna retire effective July.
Wow, wow.
So.
So he's gonna get a so good, get a good salary, he's gonna.
Yeah, he he is, he's one of the definitely one of the higher paid guys in the power department, um but if we if we don't fill his position and Brian assumes more of that role. Then we can fund a meter technician or a meterman, and what that person does is um, we've got these meters, the mark meters installed in everyone's homes, and. We don't really have anybody trained that knows how to um maintain these meters and and see if they're working, functioning correctly, uh calibrating correctly. And we learned from other cities that if you're really watching those, um if if they're not correctly calibrated or they're not working properly, we might be missing out on a ton of money. Um you know, mis misreading people's power usage, so this is a key position, and again, one that we can do without creating any new bodies, if that makes sense, so. We'd like to fund this one as well, uh once Bruce retires, just basically switch positions, and this would actually come into savings to the city, so to me, this is a no-brainer as well.
Yeah. Well, that means um Brian will do more of the UM, he'll do all the UM stuff and be going home.
And eventually, and actually, I'm glad you brought that up here, so UMs pays us about thirty thousand a year um to for the representative. We'd like to keep Bruce for a little bit longer, year or two, um as our rep, he wouldn't be an employee of the city, but he would be our rep, and then UMs pays would pay him directly that thirty thousand. Uh we still come out ahead forty-five thousand dollars a year by doing this, we're still at net neutral, even a savings to the city, but. Um that gave Brian a little more time to come up to speed or whoever takes over that role.
Okay.
Um we're not the only city that does this, a lot of cities have done this, where they have a non-employee be their rep, and then they get that payment, so.
Oh, okay.
Nothing new. So, um think that's a no-brainer, in my opinion, um the number one staff recommendation, uh so the fifteen or so that we're looking at that have been requested, there are four that I would. Um recommend we fund this year, and the number one is the assistant attorney, um I think uh there's probably a lot more that Nick does than maybe a lot of people realize. But um an assistant attorney would help us just not only prosecute more cases, we could take on our the the class A misdemeanor cases. Um from the county, we're already doing, I guess, class B and C, I think.
Do we pay the county to do our class A cases, why would we take it on, why would we want to?
Yeah, why would we wanna take?
That's what I'm asking.
Um. Financially, I don't know if that, how much that saves us, but one thing we get with um doing it ourselves versus having the county or contracting it is. We just get better better service, uh I hear this so much, that the police department puts in a ton of work to prosecute cases or to bring people forward. And it's really demoralizing for them if uh a prosecutor just kinda throws these things out, that you haven't made it easy enough for me, I have to do some work here. And so we've seen it time and time again where.
Kinda like that.
They're not, I mean, but why have a police department, then it's gonna tell the police, like, we didn't care what you guys do and.
I know, I know. I'm just saying.
They don't care very much what they do, very much so, but I'm, I don't know why something like that. The county seems to be doing that already.
I would say that's about what, I guess, like my thoughts are, like say somebody s- steals like a candy bar. And the police have to write it up or whatever, and they send it to the send it to the county, and the county like, eh, that doesn't bug me that much, I don't know why it doesn't bug me, but it's like, I'm sure that they're prosecuting the stuff that's like. I'm sure they're looking at their stack of cases and thinking like, priority, priority, like this guy was a rape, or this was this, or this or that, and they're probably tossing out the things that they look at and kinda think.
Do does this give us the ability, though, to prosecute better vandalism and things like that, that seem like no big deal, but yet they are really a big deal?
Maybe.
That's that's a great point, I I think I think the answer there would be yes, you, cause we care about this stuff, you know, this allows us to take better control of, you know, the the cases that we're trying to prosecute and do a better job of it, rather than, you know.
Send stronger messages that these types of things are not okay, and the county's not gonna just pat you on the head.
Well, what you're saying is, you're you're not saying that that uh that Nick needs help, I guess what I'm questioning is, what you're saying is that you wanna. Hire an assistant assistant attorney and add work.
Well, let let me start a little over, cause I think we're getting off and out.
I don't read it that way, I mean, I just, I read it up there that when you're looking at the annual, you know, the thirty-five hundred cases that, you know, filed, and Nick is doing not, you know. He doesn't have any help to do them, where every other city except for Syracuse.
Yeah. Yeah.
Who has less than half the cases.
That's right, okay, so maybe I was confused, and I thought you were saying if it's thirty-five hundred and more work, you're wanting to add.
Yeah. Well, if right, here, right now, with just today, Nick's doing thirty-five hundred cases on his own.
That's a lot.
So, yeah, and compared to Syracuse is doing like, Syracuse is like half that, so.
Yeah.
Well, that even talking about the class A's, bringing those in, we're already doing twice as much work as like a lot of the other cities.
Okay.
So I'm confused, though, like if you're farming, then it's have an city attorney and a prosecutor, well, farming only has one city attorney.
That's contract.
Cause they contract, they contracted out.
I did. Where's that at?
Which is contracted prosecutor, they in Centerville, you know, so they 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 went down that route.
Uh.
Oh.
So you're saying if we hired an assistant, they could handle help with the thirty-five hundred, plus they could also take those misdemeanors seriously, which we get tons of complaints about.
What's all the other ones?
All the.
Right, okay, okay.
Right.
I I I think it's, I I have your problem, I have your problem with this.
Yeah, cause she does market this.
Right, right, I'm just saying.
And all the other things.
If we can strengthen our.
This is, this is where I kinda have the problem, my my one is this, as a council, I'm saying.
Okay.
We're giving you the authority to hire one new position at the city this year, you come to us and tell us what your highest priority is.
Agree with that, okay, over some of the others.
So you're saying the potential of one new position, total?
Yes, total, one new position, now I like.
Now, I like the ones where you've, I don't, I don't disagree with the ones at all, where you've said, we're eliminating this to create this, it doesn't create a whole new position.
Right.
Those are awesome, that's what we ask you to do, I love those. But if you're saying we want to hire a new full-time additional employee, I'm saying as a council, we're giving you the authority to do one of those.
I don't think you have unanimous agreement on that.
Yeah.
I think, I'm okay with more, depending on.
Because he's, he's suggesting.
Presenting our top.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want it more, I just want to see.
Yeah.
So, real quick, and if you hit on that one more, besides the prosecution, which is certainly a huge part of the job. I mean, Nick, he'll be the first to tell you, it's really hard for him to be responsive. He gets requests daily from departments throughout the city on, on legal questions. And being able to research those, whether it's a planning, you know, question, or it's a personnel issue. I mean, he's our guy that we go to, and sometimes it just takes him a lot of time to be responsive, to get back to us on those issues. We'd also like him to do more policy work, you know, for us. And if we had an assistant, we could get into doing, updating our policies better. And frankly, I'd like an attorney to maybe sit down on more of our meetings, like the planning commission. There's a lot of times where they're into these things that an attorney would really be helpful. And I've never frankly seen a city that didn't have an attorney at a planning commission meeting. At least all the ones that I've ever worked for and seen. So I think they're very valuable, but that'd just be one more thing that we could do if we had an assistant attorney, is just get more of those services.
And I would almost say, so I would, I would ask the question on cost differential between an assistant city attorney and a contracted prosecutor. You know, is, do we know, do we know what that cost difference would be? Because if I'm doing a contracted prosecutor, I'm not paying the merit, the hours, you know, the whatever, all the, all the additional.
Because a lot of these attorney.
The other burden.
These attorney firms, they, they'll take you as a retainer and be your prosecutor, they say, on a monthly cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a question I don't have.
And I, I did do a request for proposals for a contract prosecutor last year. And it, they're certainly, it'd be cheaper to contract a prosecutor than to hire an assistant attorney. I think you're looking at sixty thousand dollars at least in difference in cost. But here's, here's where the benefit is of getting an assistant attorney. It's on getting somebody that can be in-house, not only be responsive.
It's the additional.
But you get all the extra help on civil work and, and policy work, which I think is what we really need. And, and also, as soon as I put that RFP out, the judge from Davis County came in and sat in this room with me and said, you're going down the wrong path, well, you might say it that directly, but he said, look, I'd really caution you from contracting it out. Because you get what you pay for, these contracted prosecutors, they're, they're on the clock. And they're like, as quickly as I can prosecute these cases, the better. And that's where you get into the, what we were talking about before, with the police doing all this work to bring cases forward, and feeling like the prosecutor's just dismissing them or, you know.
And then that cleaning up. No, I, I appreciate that, I mean, that helps.
We're glad that you went to. Who said that?
The Davis County.
Troy.
Judge.
Oh, Troy Robbins.
He's a, he said he's a hockey player too, Mike, is that, you know?
I think this is one of those scenarios where I want to hear exactly what the city needs and Nick needs, and make that decision based on that.
Okay, well, we have a couple more to talk.
Well, to kind of get back to my, city gets one new employee this year. See, this is one of those things that, to me, could be, you could look at using their contract for four or five years and say, this doesn't work, plus it's increased our cost to the point, now we can hire the full-time. That's just, I'm looking at both sides. And that's why I say, if I, if I give you the hard line of, we're hiring one and a half new employees, or one new employee, you come back to us with that.
I'll tell you right now, this is my number one priority, I've been thinking about this for a long time. And, yeah, I, I think, and it may seem like, why, why would an attorney be more important than, say, like a sergeant? Like, you know, we're talking about public safety, but I really believe that if Nick left us, we'd have a hard time bringing somebody in to do this level of work in the way that it needs to be done. And, and this is something that affects all departments, because everybody relies on Nick. And, and this, by the way, I should have started with this, that I have consensus from the department heads that this is what we should do. Nick is number one priority. Everyone's realizing they're not going to get their positions funded this year. But if we had to fund one position, it'd be an assistant attorney, so.
And I'll just speak to the cost, that does include benefits, and it's a net cost. Yep, and because we are eliminating the part-time clerk.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, so thank you.
Good point.
We should have said that out loud, so.
Okay.
Okay. Mike's on.
We'll do some other asks, so.
The next on the list would be deputy fire chief. Chief Erickson's been asking for this for seven years, and you had said the point. If you start maybe with the table on the right, this is just going to give you an idea of, not many of these fire departments, but just looking at our neighbor Syracuse and Farmington. He's doing all the administration on his own, whereas everyone else seems to have either deputy or a marshal or battalion chiefs that help assist with that administration. He's a one-man show, it's him and then it's the captains. And, you know, I worry about a couple of things with this. Number one, it's, there's just a lot of work on his plate. When he started, he was doing eighty, ninety-hour weeks, and now he's saying he's down to maybe sixty-hour weeks. But I think it's just, there's a burnout factor there. He does everything okay, but I think eventually we're losing things like, he's got personnel issues going on, for example. And when he's dealing with the personnel issue, he's not doing other things that are important. He serves as our emergency, emergency manager and coordinator with other, you know, jurisdictions. And I look at the planning that needs to happen there, and just a lot of other peripheral roles like that that don't always get done when you're dealing with everything, and there's, there's just a bandwidth issue there. I think also, I worry, he's going to India next week and on vacation, and when he's out, like, who's in charge of the fire department? You know, you've got captains, but you don't have, you know, you don't have a leader, two leader. I mean, I think that's important.
Can one of the captains do a dual role?
Okay, so I was just asking.
Could they be a captain slash deputy fire chief in the making or in training? Kind of position where it could be a little bit of a pay bump in there.
I mean, they're only on two of the six days, so that's the challenge there. You know, and, and so you're adding a lot of overtime costs right off the bat there, if you're expecting them to really be the number two.
How about if we created another position for a deputy slash captain, kind of hybrid position?
Just texting chief, because my question is, was similar to what you were just saying. If you took three of your captains, and made one captain a chief, one captain a fire marshal, one captain a battalion chief, but they still did, and they got more money, but they still were, but you didn't hire new captains? How does that?
Or does that rule out?
I guess what we're saying is, can.
So the captains, let me make sure everyone understands.
We don't know.
There are, there are three crews. They each do two days on four days off, and so each captain is the supervisor over his two-day crew. So he's on two days and he's off four. With the, with the assistant fire chief, deputy fire chief, that person's expected to be there, you know.
Nine to five.
Nine to five, basically.
Gotcha.
And, and they're helping to, you know, chief is going to every call, basically, whether it's, you know, two AM or what, all throughout the week. And.
Oh, is he? I didn't know that.
Right, yeah, the big calls, he's showing up to. So if we had a deputy, that'd be another person that could kind of split that with him. And, you know, if there's a two AM fire or whatever, big, big call, that person could take a turn and being kind of the on-duty, got to go out. Also, it'd be nice to have somebody that can sort of serve as the fire marshal, which the deputy could do, supervise.
Who serves right now, chief does?
Chief does, yes.
So he's the fire chief, deputy chief, fire marshal, and battalion chief, he's all, he's doing all those roles.
We do have a contracted fire marshal.
We have a contracted inspector, but that person isn't a marshal, they don't have the same level of training. Really, you need somebody that, I think, has the marshal, like, certification and can oversee that role, I think, would be a, would be a benefit to us, in my opinion. But the biggest issue here is just that, that it's kind of overwhelming for one person to do all those roles without having a number two. That's, that's the number one, that's the second request. The third one is for the sergeants.
There's one last thing.
I'm sure, and I'm sure this isn't feasible at all. But it's not, there isn't a way to promote someone to become deputy. And then, and then maybe that's a captain, and then promote one of the other guys to be a captain that was a regular firefighter, and then that.
Probably how we do it doing.
And then that role, though, that's now left vacant for a firefighter, is left, is left vacant, like, where they can survive without one less firefighter, because now that captain.
Everybody, everybody on the, everybody on the crew, Mike knows better than anybody, has those specific responsibilities. And if you leave a crew short, you put yourself.
But they do, and to be honest, they do rotate, like, the engineer and the captain will switch positions. It gives the engineer more training as a captain, because that's the most progressive thing. And when they do it, they hold to it. They get a structure fire, and the engineer who is acting captain, he is the captain. But he is that shift, he usually stays that way, and that's good. And so they do reverse.
But what I'm saying is.
Well, then they have, he's saying they would have a hole on the bottom, because you're going up, and you, you don't want that hole on the bottom.
No, you never, you don't, no, no, no.
That's why, see, that's why.
Have the seats filled. That's the number one thing you do over there, is fill the seats in the fire truck. That is your number one deal, all this other stuff is.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the seat, one seat, one butts in the seats of the fire engines is the number one.
You don't have, like, louder guy or understudy.
Okay. And that also has not only the safety issue, but it affects your fire insurance too, for your home, if you have.
If it's administrative issues that we're lacking, is, wouldn't it, wouldn't something like, I talked one and a half, making his secretary position full-time, helping the administrative side of things?
Yeah, maybe in certain aspects, but dealing with like, you know, who's gonna handle, yeah, who's gonna show up, you know, the calls, or who's gonna make sure we're doing the training correctly, or showing up to emergency, first of all.
Chief usually doesn't go to all the calls, he goes to the major calls.
The major ones, right.
Which are maybe, you know.
How often a year, two?
You probably get four or five a month, major.
Oh, major, that many?
Well, because you'll get a structure fire, that one of them not being as big as you think it is, or. Or a bad accident. Or a bad accident or something, but most of the time, that's the captain who takes care of the on-scene. And if it's usually a big, we are fortunate, there are battalion chiefs in the cities that kind of help, and we have mutual aid agreements, okay? So the, the, the services on the scene are pretty well covered, the actual incidents, I think, are covered. And if we're talking administration, because that's kind of what you're getting at, would it help to progress into this by turning that secretary position, who could go to a lot of the meetings that the chief may have to attend now, that she could probably go to, and, and give her some more responsibility that way?
I mean, she just doesn't have any fire knowledge, so I think the, I think what she's capable of doing, she's doing what she used to do. But, yeah, that is a good, good question. Yeah, I just think for the needs, yeah.
So, so you think of, you know, where we're at now, and I understand the, you know, the chief, that you get another, you get another station in place, and you get to hire those folks, then of course you're doing it.
Sure.
And so it's something that can be put off, you know, that, that decision needs to be made, I think will maybe drive some of this, when.
I mean, literally, when you go to two stations, you're talking a million more dollars just in personnel.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, yeah.
And at that point, you're probably talking battalion chiefs, not just captains. You're talking battalion chiefs, captain at each station, and.
It's a whole different.
Yeah, it's a whole different ballgame.
You know, and, and the question that comes to me is, then you kick it down the road until that decision's made? And I think we'll probably sooner on that, I don't know, I'm just.
It's, it's good.
But I think keep in mind, though, like, wait, it's gonna be coming on, their new fire station on the west side, Farmington's gonna be the only one, and that's gonna provide a lot of coverage.
If Farmington builds that station, they will have to staff them.
Yeah.
Well, we did like, well, I don't know, maybe if we did like chief now and felt like we needed to.
We have a lot of coverage over there.
That's a good question.
And to me, I, I think there's a pressing need right now. And so I would hate just to leave it completely in limbo, because we have all these other things happening.
No, I just, I, it just, you know, you think of what, what the information, they'll make a better decision.
Might be kind of nice to bring the chief in and just kind of talk about scenarios and day-to-day and.
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna do that.
We do that, so.
Yeah, this is kind of just giving you a little bit of a highlight of what's to come, but when we get into it.
I think very much appreciate having that now, instead of when they come in and if you have it in rank order. Thank you. Sorry, I think this is very beneficial, yeah.
Perfect, and this is the last one for the day.
Did you want to say your? Oh, well, just sorry, on the last page, to Perry's point, like, if we're concerned about making changes in the future, couldn't we just say, you know, if we feel like we need a chief now, but then maybe when the second fire station comes on, however many years down the road that is, maybe we convert that position to something else, like Mike's saying, like how they have like battalion chiefs or something, I mean, that'd be a devotion for that person, so maybe they go somewhere else, or maybe we.
Or you could start.
I don't know.
I mean, it is tough on the chief now, I agree, but when you do go to two stations and battalion chiefs, a lot of administrative things will go to those guys?
Yeah, if, if we go to battalion chiefs, I mean, I, I don't know how soon that station is, though, that's.
That's.
It's years off, but, yeah, good, good question. Sergeant, so the last one to talk about is blue sergeants. This is something that, I don't know exactly when this was first requested. Saul claims it was requested back in twenty nineteen originally, I don't know, but it ever made it to the council.
I remember talking about.
We've seen this before.
Okay, so, so the reason for the sergeants is about coverage, the patrol, patrol coverage, excuse me. Right now, we've got two sergeants that cover the patrol for the entire week. So there's two sergeants on duty for forty hours a week, and there's a hundred and eighty-six hours in a week. So they're, they're covering eighty hours a week, and that's not even counting when they're off for, you know, vacation or whatever. So at most, we're getting eighty hours of the hundred and eighty-six hours supervised. The biggest concern here is the risk and liability of having young patrol officers out there without a sergeant on duty to supervise them. And there are times, especially in the early morning hours, you know, when we don't even have the chief and the, you know, assistant chief in the office, and, and these guys are basically handling calls, you know, on their own. And every time you see in the news these days where something went south, you know, George Floyd or whatever it is, it's oftentimes because there wasn't a sergeant there, you know, a senior guy that kind of knows what he's doing. And we've got a lot of young officers, and we're just concerned that they're out there patrolling on their own and potentially getting into really dangerous volatile situations, and not having somebody on duty to, to make sure things are handled appropriately. So this, this would allow us to make sure we have basically twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven supervision of the patrol by having these two sergeants.
Here's a random question, and I'm, I'm probably gonna get destroyed for asking it, but do we, so someday, when, when Saul does retire, do we need to replace the assistant chief, if assuming the assistant chief becomes the chief, or something like that?
I don't think so.
Because then we would have money to fund some, some sergeants, and just wondering if that's a future potential plan?
Honestly, haven't, haven't looked at it or thought much about it. From what I can see, you know, the assistant chief is, is important, just like the deputy chief for the fire department is. And so losing that position, the ability to have, you know, somebody in charge whenever the chief's out of town or out of the country, or just to handle all the different issues that come to the administration.
So many years Saul did that, though, on his own, because how long, we've had the assistant for a year and a half, two years, maybe, now?
No, that's pretty hard.
No, but he's been the assistant, he's only been the assistant chief in that position. We only created that position, or that position, so I created with my class. Is there a year or two-year? Anyway, good question.
Take this one.
I think it's a good question.
Great.
So, am I reading this right, so we have five sergeants?
We have two, two of them are patrol, right.
And then they're asking for two more sergeants.
We have seven sergeants?
So seven sergeants total, and then are those two new positions gonna be on patrol, so four? So seven sergeants total, and then are those two new positions gonna be on patrol, so four on patrol?
So to be four patrol, basically provide that.
Double recovery. How come, how come Farmington has six, but four patrol? That's confusing.
Chief could probably speak to better to how they're set up over there, but the idea between like with Farmington and and Doniful Centerville, they're trying to provide more of that twenty-four seven supervision of patrol.
Yeah.
But I think one of the key numbers here is is to look at the number of um, patrol staff that we have, looking at both patrol sergeants and patrol officers. And then you look at how many people we have in the city.
I got you.
So each one of our patrol staff, when you look at sergeants and and officers, is overseeing twenty-five hundred people almost compared to everyone else, you know, they're they've got a lot more coverage of patrol than than we do.
Yeah.
How do you compare it sworn officers?
Total sworn officers? Um, I don't have that number right in front of me, but.
That would be a good number to have, how many does? Total sworn officer?
Thirty-three?
But that would be a good number to have in comparison.
Are you, are you talking about like uh, SROs too, like school resource officer and everything or just?
No, 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 total sworn off, yeah, yeah, I am.
Well, yeah, I think that 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 can be a little skewed and it's a fine number to look at, but just to remember, like, we've got a ton of SROs, but those guys are just at the schools, they don't really do much for us.
We also, I thought they also went to patrol when the schools weren't in session.
When they're not in session, yeah, they do help us out, like, you know, some more time a little bit, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-four, Mike.
Thirty-four sworn officers.
Aren't they also partially paid for by the school district?
They are, yes, yeah, yes.
Yes, yes.
How many uh, like, I mean, other cities have schools and that, we we have.
We have, yeah, I think we have a lot of SROs in other cities, that's what I think, but.
It'd be nice to know what compares to sworn off. That gives an idea.
It seems like, though, I don't know, if we were to somehow mirror what, if we were to somehow mirror, say, what Farmington or Doniful's doing, is if we just, if and again, like you said, we'd be able to speak, but if you increased it by one sergeant and went to six, then you'd have four, you should, if you're following them, you should have four patrols. Not, not have to go to seven to get to four, does that make sense? Am I looking, do you see what I'm looking at?
So so those are, you're not saying those other three sergeants that aren't on patrol are assigned to detective or whatever other you're saying, take them off detective and put them on patrol?
I, oh, so I don't, maybe that's where I'm confused, is cause here you look at like on the, on Farmington, it says six and four can patrol, six and four can patrol, wires, ours five and two.
Yeah. We can have chief speak to cover duties of those sergeants.
Okay, yeah, alright, alright, that makes sense.
So, maybe, and and maybe that's a good place to leave it, cause we will have the departments come in, I think that's gonna be beneficial to have them speak to items like this much more authoritatively than I can, frankly, but uh.
I do think it's alarming, we've got so many people for patrol.
Another point to keep in mind too, is I've been surprised at how many officers. I think we have happened to.
Patrol, car breaking.
Yeah, cutting cutting SROs and detectives.
Yeah.
And there's no leadership on hand to tell them, I mean, they, they, they're pretty young.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have.
I I agree, that makes sense.
Sorry, me, he made a good point.
Uh, just, we've had, it seems like, I don't know if we've had an uptick, but we just have so many cases where things are happening late at night or early morning hours.
And that's where we don't have to cover it right now.
Yeah, where cars are getting broken into, I mean,
There's a house that's.
it's happening more often than we're all here with you.
Yeah.
There's a house that was broken into with the family still home, just recently, and it is increasing, it's.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that. Even in my neighborhood alone, it's been, I've seen the increase.
And I kind of take you back on that, think we have a lot of, I mean, we have, I litigation where if we had had supervision, we may not be in that situation. So I think liability-wise, we struggle in this area too, just because the liability's so high if we've got young officers without supervision. Not that they're not doing their best, but.
No, but in talking to the chief, there is lack of ability to make decisions, cause they just don't know.
And that's the type of conversation I would like to have, when they come in and ask for stuff, I wanna know the why and really dig into that.
Yeah, this is definitely high level and we can help.
And I I was, I almost printed out copies of, I've got memorandums that kind of get into the nitty-gritty, which I can forward out just in preparation for those discussions, but I just knew it was probably too much today to really get into that level. But just on the highlight, that's what we're talking about here is liability. Um, you know, the patrol staff, since Paul Thompson was brought in, like twenty-five years ago, I think we've added just a couple of patrol people. So that's kind of the chief's analogy, is like, we haven't grown with the city, the city's grown, we're seeing more calls for service, we're seeing, you know, a lot more scrutiny put on um, police departments than we did, say, ten years ago, twenty years ago.
You've added twenty-eight.
I don't know, effects for body count.
It was five, but now you've added twenty-eight since I started.
Well, patrol, now, we've added, you know, SROs and we've added detectives and other things for sure, but that's just talking about the patrol division, so.
And I'm, and I'm still kind of at that hard line, and then just so you know, from that thirty thousand foot level, it's all the same bucket at the bottom. At the end of the day, it's all taxpayer money, it's all what we pay. Um, and I'm saying, yes, there are priorities, there are some priorities, people are gonna, there are people who are very much more passionate than others. But I'm telling you, I'm I'm okay with hiring one new full-time person, can you tell us who that is? That's my, that's gonna be where I'm at. I'm only speaking for Mike, as one council member, and maybe next year, we'll hire one more additional person. What's your highest priority? And the next year, they will hire one more, what's your highest priority?
Well, and I would just speak to to your point, if we do kind of have a policy of one per year, we have a couple of years to make up for, because we've had a hiring freeze, and so I think we've gotten behind just a bit, so.
I really don't, because I think Jason's made a good point, you know, the reallocation.
So the, and the reallocation.
And and, you know, I want you to know, I didn't get to these four easily, it obviously fifteen requests and um, yeah, there's other opportunities, I think, where we can maybe reallocate, I don't, you know, I don't want show my cards too soon, cause they're employees that probably don't know that they're part of that plan. But, and I shouldn't have said that. But uh, but yeah, we're trying to be as efficient as we can with, we know that there's limited budget, but I mean, again, there are liabilities and concerns about being able to provide the level of service that we really need to. Um, and I think this is what we need to do to to get there, but with that, like, really kind of what's to come? So again, we're gonna shoot out packets to department heads next, next, in the next week and then um, get those requests back to us in a few weeks, and then we'll come back to you with with things, one question, we'll get into capital more and the water with, we're excited to get it back, do some like live modeling and then get more into revenue discussions, but I know it was uh, there was an interest in having like a work item on the regular council agenda. We don't really have any more to present at this point, so for next Thursday, is there any desire to have a work item? Do you have more questions that you want to discuss, or are we good for now? So.
It's really good.
Yeah, I'm good, perfect.
I'm really good.
See more data.
Okay, yeah, we'll we'll be definitely having more data soon, so um, we'll schedule something when that's ready. And that's uh, I think that's all we've got, unless Viner.
I'm Viner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, guys, great. Great meeting.
Thank you.
Very well.
But look at that, happy Valentine's Day still.
You stopped the uh, stopped the recording?
Not officially.
I'm definitely, because we have some rates, we need to write.
I don't think so, I think the mayor's gonna say, okay, we're done.
Okay, we're done, thank you, everyone.